Thank you, Mr. White. Welcome, everyone, to the October 3, 2019 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Could we just stand for the pleas of allegiance?
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just need to make an announcement that we are being recorded by WCTV. And also, Ms. Frewes is making a copy as well. And if anyone needs, would like to record this meeting, they just have to let the chair know. And I'm, okay, I see one person is recording the meeting in the very back there, so just be aware. That said, first agenda item is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Thank you. And just state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Michelle Dargan-Fredricks, and I'm a lifelong resident of Wareham and a graduate of Wareham Public Schools. So I come today because I have been reaching out to the Transportation Department and the Superintendent of Schools, as well as several members of this board. Part of that, as a public school administrator myself, I have tried to stay very hard following the chain of command, so much to my dismay, I'm here tonight. I'm here because our school district is going backwards. When a parent comes with a concern, my responses since July have gone unheard, or, most recently, I've been receiving responses, "We'll get back to you tomorrow." I received a response this morning from the Transportation Department that said they'll get back to me by the end of the day. I'm here because I have not received a response at all. Part of the superintendent's goals is to address community and to reach out to the public and its members. Today, I'm very embarrassed. I pay taxes, I live here, and I chose to send my children to school here. All I'm asking, as both a public school educator and a public school administrator, is someone to reach out to me and answer my complaints.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Cindy Perola. Hi, Michelle. Haven't seen you in a long time. So, good evening, school committee members. I'm here belatedly, at the request of Michael Flaherty, who invited me to speak during public participation at your last meeting, but I couldn't make it. A couple of you may have been in attendance the night I made a presentation to the School Building Committee on behalf of my family. And I'm sure you may have had a chance to read my letter to the editor. So I'm really not sure how much more I can add. But... I'm sorry.
I'll take your time.
Every elementary school in this town, to my knowledge, has always had a distinctive name. From the Everett Elementary, where my mother went to first and second grade, to the Oak Grove School, to the Pilgrim School, to the Hammond School, even the East and West that probably had names before that. I'm sure there are others in history that I'm missing. It's been mentioned that because it is Wareham Intermediate School and Wareham High School, it should be the same name for the new elementary school, Wareham Elementary School. Frankly, the only reason the two schools, one of which we're sitting in right now, which started as the Wareham High School, the only reason it's Wareham High School and Wareham Intermediate is because it was already municipal land. The current multi-service center that we're sitting in was the original high school. It's the one my mother graduated from in 1939. It became the middle school when the new high school was built in 1950, and then that school became the intermediate school when the current high school was built. Perhaps if philanthropy was involved when these projects were being considered, they might be named something else today. The word "inclusive" has also been mentioned. That confuses me. I'm not sure what's inclusive about losing history or individuality. I just don't want this town to be homogenized with your vanilla brush. I can't think of anything more inclusionary than continuing to honor two immigrant families. The Minnetonka family, who most certainly hail back to our roots, our origins as a country, and whose ancestors were most likely among the pilgrims 400 years ago, and the Deacon's family, whose classic immigration story mirrors dozens of families in this community. I come here in an effort to speak for many families who have been and continue to be generous donors in Wareham. If the legacy of that generosity has an expiration date, where is the incentive to make a mark in your community? It's truly disappointing that nobody thought to reach out to either my family or the Minnetonka family, and that I had to make the first contact to the superintendent earlier this year. If it was your family, whose name was being erased from the school, you might have thought about it twice. On behalf of my siblings, I just have to say that what you proposed at your last meeting falls short is truly a disappointment. I consider the John William Deacon's School a war memorial to my uncle. And taking down a couple of pictures and digging up a tree that was planted in honor of my mother and moving some things over to a wing, or a hub, or a room, just, I just can't even... I'm sorry. I just can't even... Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Not seeing none. And I apologize, I should have mentioned this before. Ms. Morgan is not with us tonight because she had to go to a wake. And Dr. Shaverhood had a family emergency, and she's out of state at the moment. Dr. Schwam is here in her place. Moving on to good news. Anyone have good news?
I do. So I thought this was a good time, a good spot in the meeting, to mention the legislation that's recently been proposed. It came up, it actually, I think it was proposed the day of our last meeting, but I didn't know enough about it to mention it. And honestly, there, I still, I mean, we, none of us know how it's all going to work out and what the details are going to be. I think it's obvious that there are different parties that have different ideas, but I do think that it's important to note that the state has made a move to follow through on the promises that they've made with this legislation. And we'll just have to wait and see how it's going to impact our district in the future. And I, and it's important to note that we were contacted today by our representative, Susan Gifford, looking for our input, school committee members, and I'm sure she's open to input from school employees, or, you know, town residents, from anyone regarding the debate on the, on the legislation.
Go ahead, Ms. Rossi.
I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is our last home football, oh, sorry. I just want to remind everyone tomorrow is the last home football game for the Vikings. I don't know how we only ended up with two home games this year, and it falls on homecoming weekend, which is another exciting event for the kids. And our football team, despite being very nervous numbers-wise in the beginning of the season, actually has a really good, a winning record right now. And the kids are really doing great, so I'm hoping that a lot of people will come out tomorrow. I know it's tough with the game times moving from 7:00 PM to 4:00 PM, but we are playing at home tomorrow, so I'm hoping that a lot of people come out and support the kids because they're really, really doing well despite what it looked like it would have been at the beginning of the year, so.
What's that?
Yep.
In the spirit, anything? Okay.
Can I just share one more story?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, there's so many people from the schools in the audience tonight, and I'm sure you hear these types of stories all of the time. But I read a story today, and I, and I always like to talk about how generous our community is, so I read a story about how the Elks donates their dictionaries, and I know that's something that they do every year at Minnetonka. But the story today included a little part about the students who were most interested in the area about sign language and the dictionary. And that really took me back. And so, it just reminds me that that's something I'd love to see included in our schools, whether, I don't know at what level, but it's just something that I think that we should, that's a discussion for another day. But it was just a really great story. And again, I'm sure you all have lots of those stories every single day, but I was happy to see that one today.
Okay. And I have a little bit, too. So I went to the, the parent night at the high school, you know. My, my son's a senior, it'll be his last parent night. But, but, you know, so I went and visited the teachers and such, and it was interesting. Mr. Brown's class, I was able to actually buy honey that they make, because he's the biology teacher, and they, they have bees, and they make honey, and then I'm sure they learned about the anatomy and how that all works and such, but it was, it was good honey, you know? And, and, and I still don't believe this, but he said, this is what he said, I don't believe it, but, uh, he said he's, he's got two human skeletons. I didn't see them, but they're human, they're real. They're not, like, models.
They're there.
Huh?
They're real.
Yeah. Thank God I didn't see it.
They're properly procured and donated.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's, it's the only, it's the only ones he's, he's known of, so I'm like, who knew? Wareham's got two real skeletons.
Both of school committee members passed.
Oh, no! Oh, geez. Oh, and he, he said he wanted to get some chickens to get, to do eggs, you know, and learn anatomy as far as that goes, to biology, not anatomy, biology. But anyway, I, I thought that was really interesting. Also, not really a school thing per se, but, you know, Wareham youth, I happen to participate in that Lopes, you know, refurbishing the other, the other, like, last weekend, and, but what a great time that was, what a great group. Wareham Core, just such a diverse group. I mean, there's probably as many retirees as, you know, young kids there. It was, it was great. And we, I think we got a lot done, too. So, that, that's just going on in the community, and I thought that was really cool. Any other good news? All right, so moving on to the report of the student representative.
Hello, everyone. All right, let's get started. So, an extremely current event is actually over at the high school right now. It's the Viking Theater Company One by One, so if you want to make that, I would go. Also, something really exciting is haunted hallways. That's October 30, from 4:30 to 6:30. We'll have face paint, crafts, light snacks, and refreshments. It's a great opportunity for a safe and fun trick-or-treat for the children. All hands on deck, Wareham High School clubs for that. I think it's really cool to have all of, most of the clubs, like, unite for that. That should be good. The Key Club is hosting a cleanup at the Wareham Public Library on Saturday. This is always a great effort for this event. We've actually done it multiple times. And I believe the high school received a grant to do something neat with the library. I don't know much about that, and not to call you out, Ms. Linehan, but I see you back there.
Oh, yeah, we will definitely hopefully bring that during the school committee meeting. Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Wasn't really prepared.
I'm sorry. All right. So, yeah, we're very pleased, we're very pleased. We were able to get a grant from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners in the amount of $15,000. This is going to allow our library to have a microspace with sewing, coding, 3D printing, did I say laser cutting? Lots of technologies that have not been available in one big space for the entire school TUs. And I want to thank all the people who helped me so much with it, the department chairs who met with me and talked through it with me, and, you know, were very much part of it. That was a huge, huge help, so. More, more to come, but it's very exciting. Thanks, Emily. I have to get you back now.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, I think that's super exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I feel like a lot of things like that are popping up around the high school. I think we're really kick-starting a bunch of stuff like that. I think it's going to be awesome. So, yeah, that's what I got.
Thank you very much. All set? Thank you. All right, so on to the meet, the minutes of the meeting, September 19, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I have, I have a few things I wanted to point out. All right, so on, on page two, just, let's see, down under the discussion of, discussion and vote of the name of the new school, probably the one, two, third paragraph, it says, you know, Chair Flaherty stated that according to Town Council, and it says Chair Trappiano. I just think we should say Selectman Chair Trappiano, just so that's clear. That is Selectman Chair Trappiano. And then, and I also, Ms. Bakayaka, you'll probably agree, but where it says, "On September 11, 2018," I'm sorry.
What page are you on?
It's the same page, same paragraph, page two. It says, "On September 11, 2018, the school department made a presentation to the board of selectmen, who then voted on the warrant article." And I, and I wanted to be clear that we mentioned that it was, like, after the school committee left.
Right.
So I'd like to have that added as well. Same paragraph, last sentence. However, no vote was taken by the school committee on a name. I'm sorry, back up. Probably, probably the second-to-last sentence. Chair Trappiano said the article needed a title. Deacon's at Minnetonka Forest. Deacon's at Minnetonka Forest was what the building committee decided, and, and we, what he actually said is what they decided. He had, he had physically said "they," and he didn't even mention the, the building committee. So, and, and the point was that there was no "they," and then I had, I had mentioned that. So I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that he said "they" instead of "building committee." And, let's see. And, and so, probably the third paragraph from the bottom, it says, "At the school committee meeting on Monday, on Monday evening, both names were discussed, and it was a 15 to 3 vote to name the school, Wareham, Wareham Elementary." I, I just think we should put a date in there, not just Monday. We'll just say, like, you know, September 16, 2019. And, and with, with that, I, I think that, that would be good.
Well, if you're already making, if you're making changes, anyway, to that sentence, both names were discussed, and it was 15 to 3 vote, I would say to recommend the name of the school.
Sure.
Because, obviously, they're not naming the school.
Yeah.
Just see where I mean, Michelle? Okay.
So, so with that, could I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The amendment passes 4-0-0. So on the, on the, amended minutes, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, because I wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay. So that's 3-0, 3-0-1. Thank you. Excuse me. All right, so. Do we do that, then switch, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so we're going to move on to the life in the day of a school nurse, but after that, on the agenda is reported the MCAS results. I was, I was discussing this with, with staff and such, we thought we'd move the vote on the name of the elementary to above the MCAS results, because that's going to be a long discussion on the MCAS results.
Okay.
Unless anyone has any objections. All right. So with that, we will do the life in the day of the school nurse. And just, just make sure your microphones are on, please.
Aye.
Hey, everybody.
Green light, yep.
Yeah, it should be green.
Yep.
Welcome.
Good evening. We'd like to thank you for having us here. Dr. Shaverhood thought it would be a good idea if we let the public and the school committee know what we do on a daily basis. I think a lot of people don't realize what goes on in the nurses' office.
And can you just state your names, and which school you're working in?
Sure. Go ahead. Mary Ann Yakabuchi, Wareham High School.
Sue Akins, Wareham Middle School.
Danielle Ambrose, Minnetonka Forest.
Sheila Brayley, the Deacon's School.
Thank you.
So, we, we made a little PowerPoint, and I'm going to talk a little bit, and then each...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but they had asked me that when we start doing presentations, that if we can shut this row of lights off, so, to the person right next to the light switch, if you can hit the one right by your head, the closest one, yep. Yeah, that, that one, just that one. Nope.
Just the one.
Yeah.
Just the one. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, this is the life in the day of a school nurse. And people always ask us what our job is. And so we just put together a few things that we feel gives you a job description of what we do. And we feel our job is to keep the students safe, healthy, and ready to learn. And we must be caring and sympathetic towards family, staff, students. We are the first responders in our buildings for any emergency that goes on. Again, we provide social and emotional support to families, students, staff members. We provide health promotion, as well as health education. And every day, we have to create emergency plans, as well as individualized healthcare plans for the acute and chronically ill children. Our responsibilities, there is quite a few, but we try to just put the ones that we thought were important. Maintain our student health records according to the Department of Public Health standards. We maintain the automated defibrillators in our buildings, as well as the emergency transport equipment. We have to coordinate our school physicals for sports with the athletic directors, and we do that by dealing with the local pediatricians. We do staff trainings. We have to do EpiPen training for all the staff in our building, as well as bus drivers. We do diabetic care. We have seizure management. We have quite a few mandated state reports that we have to do. And we also have to do mandated screenings through the Department of Public Health, and each grade level has different screenings that they do. We all do vision in here in BMI. Middle school, we do scoliosis. High school and middle school, we do a new one called SBIRT, which is a screening and brief intervention referral to treatment screening for kids that are at risk for alcohol or drug use or tobacco use. And we have, we do that on 7th graders and 9th graders every year. On the average day, well, there really isn't an average day, but, but when you come in in the morning, the first thing, you usually receive calls from parents about what has happened the night before. We get a lot of calls from staff about health issues that are in the classroom. We all perform triage of our student visits, as well as perform basic first aid. We have our daily medications, which vary in every building, and we also have PRN medications, which are, if the doctor prescribes an inhaler or aspirin, and the kids come in when they are in need of that, and we administer them. We have daily procedures that we do with doctors' orders. Again, we do the screenings, and these were just a few, elementary especially, the head checks for lice. I mean, they're in the classroom constantly doing that. Vision here in BMI. We attend IEP meetings when we're asked to. And so now Mary Ann's going to talk a little bit about her health office at the high school.
Okay. It's busy, just like everybody's is. Sometimes it can be a little overwhelming, lots of visits. Sometimes it's just a kid coming in to check and see if you're still there, or they just need a Band-Aid or a tissue, or a little Vaseline for their lips, or whatever it may be. You have your regular daily medications. Right now, I think I have 11 so far this year. I have special ed kids that come in that I help assist transfer them. Sometimes they may need a little more assistance, depending on what's going on with them at the time. I work a lot with the trainer, so anybody that has a sports injury, if they happen to pop in and see me or mention something, there's a lot of communication between the trainer and myself with what goes on during the day, if they had ice, or if there's an injury they didn't report from a game. Student accident reports, I have 16 of those already for the year that we have to fill out, and there's a process with that between the trainer, if it involves a sport. If it doesn't involve a sport, you know, it's signed off by the teacher that was there, signed off by the principal, it's forwarded to Dr. Shaverhood. The parent is called and either notified, or notified and told to come pick up the child. Sometimes you're involved with the doctor. So there's a lot just with that one piece of an accident report. South Coast Health Van in Wareham Family Planning, the van comes to the high school once a month, is how it's been for the three years, the past three years that I've been there. This year, we had plans for them to come. Unfortunately, we just found out last week, that's on hold and not going to be happening for this year. So that was a surprise, but South Coast has a lot of changes right now. Wareham Family Planning usually comes into the nurses' office for an hour once a month to meet privately with the students. They don't need parent permission for that. I'm hoping that that's still going to happen this year, but we're waiting to hear on that piece. Oops. Jumped to middle school. No, that's okay.
Okay. So, the, oh, she went back. Okay. Do you have more to say?
Oh, no, that's, oh, that's, oh, that's okay.
I was trying to blow your PowerPoint.
Okay. Nope, that's fine. No, that's fine. Some things I'd like to just quickly mention. Challenges, obviously, is the amount of flow of students that are coming in, having to do phone calls, parents, back and forth, staff calling us with concerns, responding to emails, sending emails, daily meds. The mental health, social, emotional, is overwhelming. Anxiety in the kids is overwhelming, trying to deal with all of that. You could spend half an hour, 45 minutes with one kid. You know, we try to involve guidance, but sometimes guidance is meeting with another student, so you're trying to help guidance out as much as possible as well. A big concern that I have is we start the year off behind, or at least I do every year. This year, the fall physicals, sports start in August, I don't start till the end of August, so I'm already behind on my sports physicals. New and returning students, I have 46 this year, so throughout the summer, I've had emails from Erica, reviewing physicals, vaccines, to make sure they're all set to start at school. 101 kids have transferred out, so that means pulling their chart, printing out a form, getting the charts into the mail and where they need to go. So it's just, it's really a lot, filing. So my recommendation, which I'm sure they would all agree, is start thinking about either another full-time nurse to work as a float, a part-time, or even part-time, maybe guaranteed two days a week to start. We have somebody to back us up if we need sub-coverage. Right now, when we take days off, if we take a day off, we get our own coverage. Nobody finds our coverage for us. We get our coverage, we make sure we have that lined up. If it's a sick, unplanned day, then we do the best we can, and we try to cover each other. If we had somebody that could float, that person could cover that time. They could also be getting trained in case anybody ever wants to retire. We'd have somebody to slip right in there. If something came up and somebody was sick, you know, going to be out for a few weeks, we'd have somebody already trained. This person could also help on the days that we are fully staffed, to help us do a lot of the screenings that we need to do. So it's just my recommendation.
Do you want to take questions now, or after everyone's done, or?
Whatever way you'd like.
Good, Ms. Rossi.
So, do you, when you say you find your own coverage now, do you guys have a set list of subs that are obviously approved to work for Wareham Public Schools? And how many do you currently have that, like, flu season comes up, you guys are the ones surrounded by every sick kid in every building. The likelihood of you guys staying healthy through the year is, realistically, you're going to get probably sick first. I mean, you're around everything. So say, in two different buildings, you have two nurses that come down with the flu, we, do we have more than one sub for an instance like that? Or is there, you guys kind of...
We're, we're hurting, like, every district, basically, for sub-nurses. It's hard to get them.
I will tell you, we did build up our list last year. We were up to seven, and this year, we have one, because they didn't want to come back. You know, it, it's just, they all work. And honestly, for the amount of money that they're paid to come in, the office is really crazy, and they get overwhelmed. And so they'll come in and do it, and then they're, like, you know, you're... And so, they'll come in and do it, and then they're like, you know, you call them and you beg, borrow, and steal and say, please, come, you know, we'll help you. Like, if there's somebody at the high school, I'll walk over from the middle school. And especially now, I can do that because Minnetonka is there. But when I was doing that before, middle school was without a nurse, and you can't do that, you know? So, we are trying to build it up again, I will tell you. But as of right now, we have one nurse on the sub-list.
So, now, these would go through the same, you know, fingerprinting, query checking, everything else. Is there any other nurse requirement to be a school nurse? Or is it BSN? Is it LPN? Like, what, what is the minimum requirement to be able to apply to be a sub nurse?
They have to be an RN. They do not have to have their BSN. We prefer that they do, but if they have their associates and they're an RN, we do use them as a sub. But they, they have to go do their fingerprints. They have to, all the other requirements, you know, they have to do all that. It's just hard to recruit them.
Thank you.
Ms. Spear.
Hi. So, just, so you said having someone who would be able to float back and forth. Ideally, obviously, an RN. But would you, for some of the clerical things, the pulling of the files or even, I'm not sure, even with screenings or anything, what's required, would, would someone be able to do that that isn't a registered nurse?
I've had a para once who didn't have an assignment because their student wasn't there, and I will utilize them if I can get my hands on somebody.
And it's beneficial to you?
Yes. Yep. As long as they know the alphabet, they can help file.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
I'm just curious, what services did the South Coast Health Van offer? Was it to students or?
It was students and staff. They'd come in, and the biggest part is our 9th grade health class, Tina Clark, would have that program as part of her class or curriculum. So, the kids would split, and I would take half of them out to the van. They'd meet with two nurses out there. Family planning was on the van as well. They would give, you know, explain to the kids, you know, who we are, which hospital we work for, ask the kids about the three different hospitals involved, you know, do you know what South Coast is? Tell them that they're in the community. Tell them the services they offer, not just for kids in school or the staff at school, but for their parents, their grandparents, the community. Blood pressure checks, cholesterol checks, flu shots. Family planning would do their piece. And also talk to the kids and tell them, you know, not much that we can do on school grounds. However, this is where we're located. You're welcome to come down. You can schedule an appointment.
So, that's a big loss.
It is. Hopefully, it's going to come back.
Oh, there is a chance of it.
Maybe not yet this year, but not giving up on them yet.
Just one more question. So, when the 8th grade moved over to the high school, so that's obviously a bigger population for you. Was there any, there was no staff, additional staff in your office?
No, no. And out of those 101 charts that had to be transferred, 46 of them, you know, well, there was probably more than that 8th graders, but 46 of them went to Upper Cape. So, that makes it a little bit easier that I can pull them all out, stick them in a box, and then have them delivered. So, that was a chunk that went, but.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, you took one of my questions about how I wanted, I wanted to ask you about that, about, basically, I think your population increased 20% when they brought the 8th grade over, but it was still just you, right? And so, now, when we talk about class sizes, we always talk about like, you know, the student-to-teacher ratio. Like, what would be a good ratio for nurses to students?
Well, that's a difficult question, I think, because technically, if there's more than 750 kids, we should have an additional nurse. But is that 750 perfectly healthy, stable, mentally stable children? You know, health-wise, mental health-wise? So, it depends on the population of the kids that you have too. And, I mean, I've only been a school nurse, this is only my fourth year. But I'm sure Sue and Sheila have seen a huge difference between how it was years back as opposed to the kids that we have now in the school, what services they're doing in the school.
Yes. It, and it depends, as she says, on what the needs of the student population are. I, when I first started at the middle school 24 years ago, I started with 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and I had 972 children.
Wow.
And that was what I did every day. Now, I'm at 5th, 6th, and 7th grade, and I have 560, I think, something like that. I'm not exactly, you're not sure of the exact number. But my day is busier now with those 500 than it was with the others.
Why?
Because of procedures. When you see the, I mean, when I come in in the morning, I start seeing students to give medications at 7:40 in the morning. That's my first student. They, they're waiting for me when I come in from bus duty. And it's continuous all day long.
There's more kids with allergies, EpiPens. We have a lot more diabetics. When I, my first year at the high school, I think I had eight diabetics. This year, fortunately, I only have two. Seizure disorders.
Two in the whole school are diabetic? Okay, wow.
There's also more students now with behavior problems, social and emotional problems that tie up a lot of your time. We do have added support, like social workers and behaviorists, but sometimes that's not enough either.
What can you, what can you tell me about student vaping?
It's happening everywhere, not just in our district.
Right.
It's happening everywhere. It's hard, it's honestly, it's hard to deter, you know, to catch them unless you find something on them. You know, you can kind of question them and ask, and I have a lot of suspicions. I've had kids vape right in the nurse's office behind my back, bathroom door's right there. And there's no, we have no alarms or anything that go off. Sometimes you can tell if there's a really fruity smell, and it's a boy that walked out of there, and you know it's not like bath and body perfume. So, you can have somebody check them out and search them, but it's really hard. And a lot of the other kids don't want to use the regular bathrooms because they don't want to be in there and get caught when kids are vaping in there.
So, so, the kids that are going to your bathroom, do they have any business being there?
Not really. They do if they have a doctor's note with the medical diagnosis or if they're a special ed student. But I also have a lot of 8th graders that, you know, are small for their size, kind of shy, and it's kind of scary going in the bathroom with the big kids.
And I'm sad to hear that because that was a concern parents had when we moved the 8th grade there.
Yeah. And a lot of kids have anxiety, and, I mean, quite honestly, I hear from the kids, like, the locks are broken, so then we get the locks fixed, and then they break them again. Or, you know, you can't go in the bathroom and have a bowel movement because the kids are all saying stuff or kicking the door. You know, so they want to come and use my bathroom, which this year has been an issue because it's overflowed seven times.
Oh, wow, okay.
Already.
So, when I was a sub at the middle school, we had, one of the days, if I wasn't needed in a classroom, I would get bathroom duty or hall duty, and I would have a desk right outside the bathrooms, and the kids would have to sign in and out. Do they not have that kind of?
We still have that. We have a person that's outside the bathroom. We only have one set of bathrooms open. It's open certain times. The kids all know when the times are. The teachers know too. The person is not in, physically inside the bathroom with the kids, so things happen. The doors are left open. So, if you hear a lot of noise or yelling, you know, you can go to the door and say, come on, everybody out. And.
And that's not your fault. That's not your, that's more of a question for the principal.
Yeah, but even still, it's hard to control unless you physically have somebody standing in the bathroom babysitting them. We had a student the other day that had a bowel movement in the urinal. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is. You can't put cameras in the bathroom. I know one of the teachers mentioned at the previous school she was at, they had a person standing in the bathroom, kind of like some places, you know, hand you a towel when you come out of the stall.
I know someone at Born Public Schools, and she was, started off as a sub, and she got promoted to the high school as a, she called it a narc, where she would actually literally just float through the building throughout the day and pop in and out of bathrooms, trying to curb kids from doing things that they weren't supposed to be doing. That was literally her job at Born, was to go in and out of the high school bathrooms.
We had them at my high school, and this is quite a long time ago, but we did. I mean, we had, it was a city school, but we had security officers who did the exact same thing.
And did I hear or read correctly that you guys actually maintain the defibrillators? You know, make sure they're up to stuff and all that?
Yeah, every month.
So, that's not like the fire department or the police department or anything? That's you guys?
No, we, we maintain them in our building.
Change the batteries.
Oh, boy, okay. Have you ever had to use one?
No, hopefully, never.
Thank, thank God. Yeah. Any other, well, I, I love when we do these, day in the life of acts. I love that. So, this is great. I'm glad you guys came.
Yep.
Yeah, I just.
More questions?
Oh, wow.
So, this is.
They were answering, they were all answering questions.
Okay. So, this is the middle school. And as you can see, last year, we, in my office, I had 5,933 visits that I charted. That doesn't count the ones that I didn't chat. And every day, as I say, I have medications. I have chronically ill students. I have diabetics in my building as well that are very brittle and students with seizure disorders. I do catheterizations. I have G-tubes that I have to maintain. I do my screenings, and I do a lot of emotional support for the parents and the guardians. They're constantly calling me about issues that are going on. And if Minnetonka doesn't have a nurse, I do the Minnetonka students as well. So, it's a very busy day.
Any questions for Ms. Atkins? Doc, Nurse Atkins?
Hi.
Well, actually, hold on a second. Did you have a question?
This is like a random question. I was curious, do we ever do like blood drives anymore? I feel like that was a long time ago, but that's just not a thing anymore?
It hasn't happened since I've been there. I don't know legally how that would go now with, yeah. I don't know. Have to see. If, if that's something you're interested in looking into, I'll work on it with you if you think.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Cool. Thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
Yeah. From being at the middle school for, as a sub for three years, do you still get in with some of the behavioral, like, just walking out of class into your office? And how does that interrupt your, if you're dealing with a regular child that's obviously, that is sick, that obviously puts a, a time constrainer issue on, on things like that? So, are people able to help you out from like, you know, from the, the support staff, like the social workers?
Oh, absolutely. Administration and, I will tell you, they, they're right there. I mean, it, I'm, I always said I was like in a fishbowl there, but they can see what's going on, and I have to say, they're very supportive. And if they notice that there's a lot of kids, even just in general, there, because I'm in the back, I work out of my back office now that I'm sharing the office with Minnetonka. I gave up my front office. So, a lot of times, there might be kids just sitting there or doing whatever, but administration comes right in.
That's wonderful.
And they're very supportive.
Good. I'm glad that that's not helping to, you know, bog down too many sick kids if there's ever an issue. And that for, you know, across all schools, I hope you all have really good support if that ever is an issue.
Minnetonka?
Don't mind my voice, I kind of lost it. Because I got a cold last week. So, I do daily medications as needed, medication sensors, inhalers, and EpiPens. Screening such as vision, hearing, BMIs, head checks for lice, 'tis the season. Playground injuries, there's been a lot of playground injuries at Minnetonka, whether it's been ankles, arms, and whatnot. Sometimes, like recently, twice, I've been out in the field with a wheelchair trying to, you know, make sure the kids are okay with twisted ankles. I go on field trips because we have a good amount of medical situations with some of the kiddos that we have. I know last year, they didn't do the mobile dentist, but this year, we're going to bring it back, and they're going to come November 26th and another date in May. I know DeCass does it as well. I also cover the middle school if Sue is out for some reason. A big thing this year for me is a lot of the transition with the 2nd graders that came into 3rd grade from DeCass. They're, you know, they're scared still, and we have a lot of kids that get incontinent and have a lot of those types of issues. They miss home. Usually, students will come to the nurse first before they tell their teacher because there's, the teacher's surrounded by kids all the time. So, they'll go to a place where there's only one person, and they usually come to me first, and I divert to either the social worker or the counselor, Mrs. DeFlippo, Mrs. Seaman sometimes, Mrs. Murphy. If no one's available, we all work as a team to coordinate, you know, to help the student out because we want the transition to be smooth and make sure that the student is happy at school and getting their education.
Any questions for Minnetonka?
Just sorry.
No, you're okay.
So, I know that, you know, with the, the younger kids in the incontinent, do you guys have like enough, like donated extra clothing? Or is that something that you want the community, do you welcome those kind of things for when, you know, even in any of the grades? If an accident, if someone has a spill, if somebody has something go on, or they got a bloody nose in gym class or something like that, is there a, like, is there a extra clothing for those children that isn't going to make them look like they, or, you know what I mean? Were wearing something that, that doesn't clearly fit? Or is there a need of certain sizes or things that you guys would, would want to put out to the community to ask for backup things for the nurses' offices?
I've gotten some donations from teachers on clothes, but absolutely, I was thinking about doing some type of drive just because, you know, I, recently, I had like some of the girls leggings rip. They're not thick material, they rip pretty easily. Instead of calling parents to have them come out of work, sometimes they'll just end up taking their child home because they have two hours left to school or one hour left to school. And I try and coordinate to make sure that, you know, I do have clothes for every child that has different sizes, just because I want them to stay in school because I need that education instead of pulling them out. Sometimes if their pants rip, their parents can't come to school for maybe an hour, an hour and a half, and that just pulls them out of their class time, and that's not appropriate. So, yes, anything.
Anything else?
No.
We'll be gone.
Okay. I'm the nurse at the DeCass School, and as you can see, most of what is on there is what has already been stated. I will share some of the things that are specific to the DeCass School. I participate, we have kindergarten and preschool in our building. We do a kindergarten registration every March. We get usually about 100 students at that registration, and then over the next five months, people slowly dwindle in and register their children. And then by July, August, we get a mad rush for everybody to come into school to make sure they have their kids registered. This year, we registered 199 kindergarten students. I'm responsible for all their medical records and their physicals. I insert, I put, input them into the computer and make from that list of students, an EpiPen list, a medical emergency list. And the teachers are also able to go on the computer and find pertinent medical information about their students so they can pre-plan before the school year starts. I do a lot of that over the summer because it's impossible to do it during your regular school day. We also have a preschool program at the DeCass School. It's for 3- to 5-year-olds. Most of these children are referred to our school from early intervention. They've aged out of their program, so they come to our school to receive further assistance and to help them out to be prepared for kindergarten. In the last 26 years, I'm, I'm in my 26th year now, I've seen a huge increase in the number of students with special health needs in our community. I started my, working in the town in Hammond, which was a very small school, before moving to DeCass in 2014. So, my population, I was at East in between, so my population went from like 125 students at one time, not all at the same time, to over almost 700 students the very first year there. The first two years at DeCass, I saw over 10,000 visits in the nurse's office. There was never an empty spot. Some days, even today, I have, I can have up to 15 kids in my office at the same time, mostly during playground time. um, mostly during, um, playground time. Kids come to, into the office. I've had a few kids whose parents have dropped them off at the door. They were complaining they didn't feel well. They say, well, go to school, see how you're doing. If you still don't feel good, go see the nurse. So the students get out of the car, they walk through the door, take a left into my office and said, my mother said if I don't feel good, I'd call her and she'll come and pick me up. I said, but I think she wanted you to try a little bit more than a walk into the building. But that's what they do on occasion. Sometimes I see kids off the school bus, um, before the start of the school day even begins, um, because they're not feeling well. They didn't feel well at home, but they were put on the bus and said, well, if you don't feel good, go see the school nurse and she'll help, help you out. For a lot of our students, we are their primary care providers. Um, sometimes, once they do get in school and you try to call parents to come and get them, you can't get ahold of anybody to come and help you out. So they do spend the day in your office on a cot, you know, resting or sleeping. Um, let's see. But if we do have children, I have to admit, I am very fortunate. I have a very great support staff at the Deacon School, from this principal right down to even the custodians. They're there to help you out in any way with, you know, that they can possibly can. So I'm extremely fortunate.
Probably especially the custodians, right?
And I help them out in any way I can do too. One hand washes the other.
Um, any questions? Ms. Spear?
Question, just a general statement. I just really wanted to thank all of you for, for what you do every single day. Um, I don't know every single one of you personally. I know when my daughter was in the middle school, Mrs. Atkins was, uh, possibly her best friend. And, um, just your ability to, if it wasn't a sniffle, if it wasn't that, to get to the root cause of what really the problem was and get her back to where she needed to go, and, and your ability to do that while juggling a thousand other things at the same time. And then in the high school, when my son broke his elbow, and it was probably, you know, to him, the most catastrophic thing that had happened in the town of Wareham, but he, uh, you know, needed to visit you so often to show you the progress of it. And just the, the, the caring nature you have with all of you. I mean, I don't know everyone, uh, but just how well you take care of our kids. And it, it really resonates when you talk and, and really means a lot to, I know me as a parent, but I know other parents as well. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Laurie said. My son has had two major health issues in his entire career at Wareham. And one was at the Deacon School where he was, you know, got a concussion from getting knocked out on the playground equipment by some overzealous feet on the monkey bars, to getting a staple put in his head because he had a run-in with a locker at the middle school. So, um, the, the staff at the, at all of the schools and the nurses, it is a huge testament to how much you care, um, especially with how short-staffed you are with a lot of the administrative tasks that you guys now, for the Board of Health Regulations, have to do on top of caring for our kids. And I just appreciate everything that you guys do every day because when I was at the middle school, Sue was always laughing. She's always in a great mood. You're the only one I really ever worked with directly. And the kids absolutely love you. Um, and I just think it's great what you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Becky?
I don't have a question. I just want to say to Mrs. Brilly, that number of visits really jumps out as such a big number.
Like I said, when I first started, the first few years, it was ten thousand visits.
Yes.
So I have a lot of, a lot of friends, a lot of friends.
I guess so. Um, and so like they said, I mean, you're obviously filling a role much larger than the school nurse. You're, you're filling many roles to the students, so thank you.
Thanks.
And, uh, I, I, I agree. I mean, yeah. And, and now, were you, were any of you involved with that incident where, um, a life was basically saved?
I was last year.
There you go, yes. Amazing. And like I said, you don't find that in the contract, you know, that's above and beyond, right there, boy. Let's see, so I was gonna ask.
So in summary, um, as you can see, just for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, we had twenty-one hundred, uh, twenty-six students enrolled in Wareham Public Schools, and we charted twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-eight visits that we did in the four schools. And as I say, that doesn't include the kids that just run in and grab a Band-Aid and run back out. You don't write those, but it just gives you an idea. Um, and we just want to say that the days of hand, just handing out Band-Aids and ice packs are no more because resources are always a challenge to us, and we never know what's gonna come through that door on any given day. So we just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you. Um, and if you have any other questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, and, and I want to thank you for coming, and, and this is a perfect, perfect timing because the budget for next year is gonna be, you know, that's, well, it's gonna start rolling, and I, for my, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you guys that you need more help. You need substitutes, you need maybe someone permanent, you know, a floater, you know, but, but yeah, I've, I've, it's, it's gonna be a priority for me anyway.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and as we discussed a moment, well, before they came up, we're gonna move on to the, um, vote on name of new elementary school. And with that, we have Ms. Siemens and Ms. Chandler. Oh, gotcha. Ah, yeah, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, school committee. Um, I think I'll begin because we just heard a very moving speech from the niece of John W. Deacon School. And because I'm the principal of John W. Deacon School, I find it important to speak about his name and his legacy and why we go to school every day, and to thank, um, John W. Deacon's family, his parents for donating, um, what we have here today. So we just want to say thank you. Um, for those of you who do not know John W. Deacon, I'm gonna show you a picture of him. So this is John W. Deacon. He stands in our hallway every day. I go by him. Um, he passed during the Battle of the Bulge during World War Two. Um, but he stands before us, and he's who our, our school is named after, this fellow right here. You can see how young he was when he passed. So this is why this niece is so moved by what, you know, what she said, because our school was named after this particular man. Not just the Deacon School. We often call it the Deacon School, but it's named John W. Deacon after this particular man here. So this is John W. Deacon. I'm gonna show you another picture. This is an article from two thousand three. This is John W. Deacon's sister, Mrs. Chamberlain, who also donated a substantial amount of money to the John W. Deacon School for technology and a library. We still have the technology going extremely strong. Unfortunately, we do not have the library due to our spacing. But this woman right here is also someone we need to think about because she valued the education, and she kept her brother's name alive through her donations. So we are here tonight to talk about the name of the school, and it's very difficult. But I do want to say this. When we're thinking about the name of an elementary school, when we say John W. Deacon School at Minnet Forest, it's an extremely long name. It's a, it, it won't be that name. Somebody's going to abbreviate it somehow, and it will not pay the homage it needs to for John W. Deacon School or the Minnet family. It's not gonna give that respect. It will be abbreviated. It's already abbreviated at Deacon. We call it the Deacon School. And I bet a lot of people out there in our town do not know how or why our name, our school is named. But it is for that man. Fifty years ago, our school was named before that, but that's why our school was named there, fifty years ago this year. So if we think about John W. Deacon School at Minnet Forest, to me, it's not paying the respect it needs for all of the families of Wareham, who, as John W. Deacon's, um, niece said, have given so much to our town.
Ms. Chandler, I, I mean, yes, I agree. And it's even worse than that because that's not what the name supposedly is right now. Right now, it's just Deacon at Minnet Forest. It's not even John W. Deacon at Minnet Forest, which is why it's so flawed, I, I believe, at this time.
And it will be more flawed because we'll abbreviate it, and we'll continue to abbreviate it, and it will not pay the respect that it needs to for this very important building that's bringing our community together.
Do you have something, Ms. Rossi?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I understand where you're coming from, saying it's going to be abbreviated. All the schools are basically nicknamed. You know, it's the high school, it's the middle school. It's just the and what grades are in it right now. That being said, I don't think that an abbreviation is going to take away the legacy of saying John W. Deacon School, or John W. Deacon at Minnet Forest Elementary School, or however the configuration is, if it were to continue to incorporate the two benefactors of both of those schools whose families have invested so much time, money, history into educating the kids of the town. It's, you're right, it will be referred to most likely as the elementary school because it's going to be the only one now. It's not going to be the decisive choosing of Deacon because that was one building, or Minnet because that was a separate building. It will just be one building, one elementary school. So even going forward, whatever the nickname will be, doesn't necessarily mean that the name has to reflect what we project other people are going to refer to the building as. I was very moved by Ms. Perola and in other things that I have read, um, about the Minnet family's contributions to the school. And I, I definitely think that, that assuming whatever the town is going to use as a nickname, as a deterrent to continue with the name that was originally projected is, is just, I, I just don't know that that's necessarily gonna gauge it one way or the other.
Can I just, can I just have Ms. Siemens finish, and then I'll have more questions?
Speak as well. Um, I did reach out to the Minnet family. I know, um, Ms. Perola said no one did, but I, I did reach out. I spoke to Jane Tugus. Um, she's a representative for William Minnet's family. William Minnet VI recently died a few years back. There is his daughter that is still, um, very much alive. She lives in New York. She couldn't be here. Jane was trying to be here tonight for public comment, um, but she's moving, and the movers had not finished packing up her house. So she was not able to be here for tonight. So there's obviously passion going about for the two families. You know, originally, when this building project started, it was a Minnet Forest project because we didn't think we could do both elementary schools. We were so pleased when MSBA had said to us that we could do a pre-K to four school because both buildings desperately needed, you know, work. The Minnet family also donated the land that the Minnet Forest School was built on, as, you know, as did the, the Deacon's family. So when we were looking at a pre-K to four building, and the building committee went through the, the choices of land in town, it was decided that and voted on that the Minnet Forest property would be the most viable property when you look at flood zones and, and all the various factors that went into it. So that was the building that was going to be demolished for the one elementary school. I have always loved the idea that we would always be together. You know, I've, I've never liked the separation. I've been here for eighteen years. We've had different configurations that have gone on, um, in town. I never liked having two elementary schools that, you know, there was competition between each other. I love the fact that we are unifying and we're going to be one. You know, with the recent, um, capsule that Deacon's just opened, you know, the John W. Deacon School has been around for fifty years. Minnet Forest, I think we did fifty-two to fifty-three years before we had to close. So we definitely have truly honored those names, and it was never the intention of anyone to not continue to honor those names in some fashion. We don't want to hurt either family, and there's other families as well. We have the Ethel E. Hammond School. And, you know, as Mrs. Perola had said, there's other factors and other, as you said, Mrs. Chamberlain. So those are other additional names that we'll have to think about as well, but we definitely do want to honor them. When we started with the design, uh, discussions of the building, we had vision and we had planning meetings with the teachers and community members and, um, all the staff from both buildings. What came out of those meetings was this vision of this hub. And it was being called the Innovation Hub at the time because that is going to be the activity center of the building. It's where the technology's going to be. It's where the, uh, there's a video production area that's going to be there. Um, steam is going to be, the arts are going to be there. There's going to be kids in that space all day long, every day, utilizing it. It's really going to be the, the main focus of that building. So because it is such a large area compared to the, the other neighborhoods that we have in the school, we would, thinking that that would be a great honor to have the John W. Deacon Innovation Hub because it is, it'll be prominent in the building. But we do want to still honor the William Minnet family of Minnet Forest by maybe having that as a neighborhood, possibly having Ethel E. Hammond as a neighborhood. Now, we, we hear about Georgia Chamberlain. So I know the last meeting that we had, the superintendent said we would have a committee, and we would, you know, kind of look at all of those aspects. So we definitely want to honor the families. When I spoke to Jane Tugus, she wasn't asking that the school be named Minnet Forest, but she was very appreciative that we were going to consider honoring the Minnet family still on the Minnet land in some fashion. So by naming it or proposing it to be Wareham Elementary School, it keeps it neutral for both families and all involved. You know, we don't have the, the east side of town versus the west side of town. Um, and it will, the names would be dropped. Even if it was the John W. Deacon at Minnet Forest, it would be called the Deacon School, and then the Minnet Forest name is dropped. So I think we're both in agreement that we support the Wareham Elementary School to move forth. We hope that you would support that, and knowing that we will honor those families and, and any others of the committee that, um, that possibly will be named, uh, would come up with. So we're proposing the Wareham Elementary School, and, and we stand behind that.
Ms. Spear, do you have any?
Um, yeah, I mean, my question is, I think you answered most of it. Um, there's different areas in this school. I mean, it's immense. We've all seen the plans. We've all seen this, the Deacon, Minnet, and, and numerous other families. Um, so, I mean, I think you answered my question where there could be a committee. There could be a, not a ta, a, a vote within whoever needs to be part of the vote. Um, to me, Wareham Elementary School makes sense. That's me. Um, but would, that makes sense with knowing that the legacy of the people who helped in the past will be part of our present and our future.
Absolutely.
So that's what I hope to see.
Dr. Schwam?
I just also wanted to mention that the School Building Committee, which is made up of a myriad of different members, uh, have been actively engaged in the conversation. And a couple of the school committee members, one currently serves, has been very active in the building committee, and others have come to the, to visit the building committee and been part of the meetings. And, um, they, the, the school committee chose to go on the recommendation of the people of the school building committee because they've been working together on this project, what, three years now, with all of the various elements that are connected to that. Never, ever was it any of our intention to ever hurt anyone's feelings or exclude anyone. The Innovation Hub is, the architects are so excited about our school. They believe it will be a model school for many other districts come and visit. And that Innovation Hub is an amazing, incredible space. It was designed and developed by a myriad of people working together to create a, a school that actually honors education, not a place where we have to do education confined in the building, right? The building is built to give kids the absolute best opportunities to be educated. It was done very carefully and thoughtfully. So I just want to make that point, um, as, as we move ahead. This wasn't a unilateral decision, um, just because some, you know, one person said so. It's a lot of work.
Yeah. Did you have something, Ms. Becky?
Yeah, so I would just like to, to agree with Dr. Schwam that, you know, I've been a part of many of the conversations at the building committee. And, um, it really, I, I think maybe it was at our last meeting where we heard from someone who has taught in the district for many years, talked about the divide that maybe existed and, you know, maybe not now, but years ago, um, at the schools and talk. but years ago at the schools and talked about how that name would bring that back up again. And, you know, we're trying to bring the schools together in a way to go forward. And I agree with what you said, Mrs. Chamberlain, that that name, I've been saying it many times over the last couple of weeks, that that name will turn into the Deacon School. And, and right now, the reason we're having this conversation, the other name of the school, it's not the John W. Deacon School at Minnet. It's the Deacon School at Minnet. And as you've said, it's not named after the Deacon's family, it's named after John W. Deacon. So, for those reasons as well as all the other reasons, yes, I definitely support the Wareham Elementary School.
All right. So, yeah, we keep saying that, you know, it's being called the John W. Deacon's at Minnet Forest, but no, it's, if nothing changes, it's going to be the Deacon, it's going to be Deacon's at Minnet Forest. It's not honoring the original intent of John W. Deacon's at all. Mr. Chamberlain, Will Chamberlain, I read his letter to the school committee for the whole record and he was very clear about that, that it was not about the Deacon's family. He was very clear. It was specifically for this man who died in World War II and it was an honor to him, the soldier. And so, it's flawed to begin with. So, no, when I heard you guys brainstorm on this, I felt really good about what you came up with and I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're looking for us to vote on the name of the Wareham Elementary School, but also to also include the hub and the wing and the early education?
I think that there's going to be a committee. Those are our initial ideas though. I know that Georgia Chamberlain from Deacon, John W. Deacon's sister was a huge proponent of technology and donated thousands of dollars to our school. And I just, that's what immediately came to me is to name the hub after John W. Deacon's because of her love for and passion for technology.
Okay, okay, so at this time, you're looking for just the building name?
For that, just for the naming of the school.
The building name. And did you have something else?
I just, it's very weighted. It's very tough and it's very passionate for a lot of people. And I do understand, you know, Wareham Elementary keeping in the Wareham High School, Wareham Middle School, in keeping everything sort of neutral, as you said. And I do, you know, as having a child that went to the John W. Deacon School and then switched to Minnet, he was that first grouping that, when the schools merged, when we blended the grades together. And when I was, I was a board member of the PTA for the John W. Deacon School. And then when we combined with the Minnet Forest PTA and we became the Wareham Elementary PTA. So, it kind of, that legwork was started a long time ago in erasing that Deacon, Minnet rivalry, as you were saying, with the kids that were, you know, in one district versus another district. And I'm sure that even before that, then, you know, when you have other elementary schools that have closed over the years, you probably had, you know, then that with the Hammond School or the Oak Grove School, as you guys had mentioned. So, I do understand that. I do believe regardless of what the town votes for the name, because at the end of the day, this is up to town meeting, I believe, for the article to go up for the town to vote on the name. But I think that, and I had mentioned this to Mike as well, having a name, even if it was to just say John W. Deacon's, in another 20 years or 30 years, the likelihood of some of those family members, you said that there's one living member of the Minnet family left and you were speaking with a family representative. So, to continue that, whenever we have a name on a building with no family to continue its legacy, it's just a name on a building for a lot of people that will be coming in. So, I think that going forward, regardless of where we vote with the name, that there should be some sort of honorary day for each of those particular families, like the Friday before February vacation, John W. Deacon's Day, the Friday before April vacation, Minnet Forest or Minnet Family Day, just to continue to educate the kids and the staff and the town on those people and the contributions that they've made to educating the kids in the town. Because just having a name on a plaque or on a tree or on a building isn't going to be enough for people to say, well, why is it named after them and their family is gone?
I think that's a wonderful idea, Ms. Rossi. We did start this at John W. Deacon's School on Veterans Day. We have a Veterans Day breakfast every year and we always commemorate John W. Deacon's because, and it's very important. So, if we do do that, we'd like to make it around Veterans Day, please.
We also, in all of our schools, we have shirts that we wear. So, I know Deacon's has their shirts, Minnet Forest has shirts, and we pick a certain day of the week or the month and we make sure we wear our shirts as well.
But I like, really like your idea about the biography that goes with, because it's so important. Ethel B. Hammond worked for 50 years without a day off. I mean, that is unbelievable. That's why that school is named for her. That's incredible. So, whether it's money or time, it's an important part of our history and I think that the students should learn about our local history. It's important, so I think that's a great idea, Ms. Rossi.
I think it's a great idea too, but I want to just not let it be lost, but I'm not sure who had pointed out the rivalry. And it's, I was at, you guys were at that school building committee, I think, maybe Ms. Chamberlain, I think you were there, but I'm not sure if you were there, Ms. Siemens. But when we, when we asked for some direction on the name, our recommendation from the school building committee to go forward with this. And I don't want to say the person's name, but if someone on the committee had brought this up about this rivalry, and she was on the committee and she said, and I think she sums up a sentiment of the Minnet community, and I've heard this so many times. And what she said is she felt like, she felt like in the past historically, the perception was that Deacon's got the best of everything, the Deacon's School got the best of everything and the Minnet Forest School got the short end of the stick. And that's always been the perception, I guess, you know, for a long time. And a lot of people I talked to, they were emphatic about that. And my child happened to go to Deacon, so I didn't see that perception, but I heard it a lot. And as Ms. Siemens was saying, this all started as a Minnet Forest project. And then toward the end, it made a lot of sense to fold in the Deacon's School, which we're doing. But this person was, it just felt like that the Deacon's School was then kind of just co-opting or, I don't want, I didn't put words into her mouth, but, you know, just swooping in at the end and taking the name. And that was palpable at that meeting. I felt that, you know, and she's a very good representative, I think, of that community because I've heard that a lot. So, this, you know, this is a great step forward, I think, going this route and by absolutely honoring them inside the building. And so, that's why, that's why I was happy. I was, it is, this is supposed to be a joyous time. We did the hard part. We got the school and I can't believe that this name is just, it's so contentious, you know, but, but if nothing's done, if nothing changes, that school is going to be named Deacon's at Minnet Forest. You know, Deacon's that happens to have an address at Minnet Forest. You know, it's just not right.
Right, and it, the land behind it is the forest.
Yeah.
It's the Minnet Forest and you don't want to take away the name from William Minnet.
Yeah, right. So, with that, is there any more discussion? So, there's going to be, there's like a two-part process here because I still, so we have an internal school process, that's what you guys have done. You guys, the school process with our policy says that, you know, we received a recommendation of the current administrative head of the building. There's two in this case, that's you two, in the school council, if applicable. We need to vote on this by a two-thirds vote. For a five-member board, that's four, that's four members need to vote, yes. It has to be recommended by the current superintendent of schools, which it is. And again, it has to be approved by the school committee by a two-thirds in a scheduled meeting. So, that's one process and that's the process that we had been going with because Mr. Swett said that, you know, and he's the chair of the school building committee, he was emphatic that it was the school committee that names the schools. It wasn't until it got on the agenda and then everyone, well, not one person, one or two people cried foul and then, and then we were like, why? We thought this was like a done deal, you know, so, and it turns out that, you know, I'm not going to rehash what I said at the last meeting, but the selectmen ended up, if you want to go by what, you know, technically what they're saying is what happened, is that the selectmen named this school. I mean, that's, that's.
Right, that, I remember being at that meeting and that was just to get the vote to be on the ballot for the school. And the name was tossed out to add to the ballot. So, we weren't voting on the name, we were voting on the fact that we wanted it on the ballot.
Absolutely. There's nothing in the verbiage of the actual motion that names the school. The selectmen named an article, they didn't name a school.
And they named it after we left.
And they named it after we left, well, I wasn't there, but after, yeah, after you guys left. So, that's why this whole thing is so flawed and needs to be corrected one way or the other. So, we're going to do two things tonight. We're going to follow the school policy, which may be moot. We're going to do, first, we're going to follow the school policy, we're going to have that vote one way or the other. And it may be moot because according to town council, it's really a town meeting that votes for this and we can change it with the town meeting article, so we're going to have a vote on that as well. So, here's the interesting part. So, this is, this internal school policy requires a two-thirds vote. Four members need to say yes. The Warren article is separate from the school policy. That's going to require a simple majority vote. And then it's up to town meeting. I'm going to follow up on this with, you know, the proper people at the state and make sure that we are doing this the right way. And if they do indeed say, okay, it's town, if they do indeed say it's town meeting that decides this, then this article will be, if we vote for it, it will move forward. Otherwise, if it's up to us, if we vote, if we vote no today, then it, in my opinion, and if they say it's town meeting, it doesn't matter, then it's still the Minnet Forest School, in my opinion. There hasn't been a legitimate town meeting vote, if that's the case. I'm going to look into all of that, but we're going to, we're going to have a plan, you know, path forward this way.
Can I just clear something? When it says that we need a four vote out of the five-member board, how is that working with Mary's absence?
No, we've got, we've got four people here.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant a four, okay.
No, no, if you have a five-member board, a two-thirds majority is four votes.
Right.
So, you would have, if we all voted unanimously tonight, that would be four votes.
Right, but I'm just saying because Mary's not here for the fifth person.
No, no, it's.
We still need four votes.
Yeah, still need four votes.
Okay, so it's four or none?
Yeah, because that's why I had to delay it last time because we only had three people here. We didn't even have a fourth. So, all right. So, with that, I entertain a motion to name the new school, the Wareham Elementary School.
I move to name the new elementary school, the Wareham Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? So, so the vote is 3-1-0. So, technically it fails for the school committee vote, but now you all have the Warren article. We're going to vote on that now. And if you have any questions on that, I'd entertain that. Which is essentially the same thing. But if you want, can you put it up there? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Well, so I know it's not moot. Can we just have a motion to approve and we have discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the town meeting Warren article.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second, okay. Discussion, go ahead, Ms. Bakayaki.
So, this is a placeholder, correct? So, it's for spring and I just want to make it clear, this is not for fall town meeting, this is spring town meeting.
Thank you, yes, I should be very clear about that. So, yeah, this is way too late to be submitted for the October town meeting. Had we known this, we would, had we known this was going to be an issue, we would have definitely done this. But no, this will be for April, but it will be, if this goes through, it'll be sitting on this superintendent's desk, ready to submit whenever the April warrants are ready to be received.
Okay.
All right, any other?
So, I guess what else I'd like to say is, you know, I appreciate the effort that you've made to work through this situation. I'm still not convinced. I will vote for this article because it's, it may be needed, but as you know, I'm not convinced that this is.
Yeah, I have been working very diligently with several different, you know, Selectman Trappiano, Attorney Bowen, Mr. Swett. I have seen nothing from anyone telling, showing me where it says that town meeting decides this. I just saw an opinion of town council saying it's the proper thing to do. So, I haven't, until someone with authority can tell me that that is indeed the method, then, then as far as I'm concerned, right now, it's still the Minnet Forest School.
It's just really disappointing to me that, and I, I mean, I guess I could just say it over and over, but that years of work have gone into this project by the school building committee, which I'm happy to be a member of. And because someone said something at the end of a meeting, now we're in this situation where, you're right, it's a joyous time. We're building a beautiful new elementary school in our town. We should be so happy about it. And here we are having to have a conversation about who's going to name the school. And, I mean, it's common knowledge that it's, you know, this has been the discussion at the selectmen's meeting and that's why we're here now. We have two selectmen who are liaisons to this board. This item was on the agenda. There's been no effort to may have any conversation. It's just really, really disappointing to me that this is the situation we're in right now.
Yeah, and so, one thing this is, I mean, there will be no doubt when people are voting on this article, that they're voting on the name of the school. That's how it should have been, you know. People voted to raise money for the school and that was it, you know, but, you know, I've said that enough, but does anyone else have any questions or any further discussion? With that, I'll, so we have a motion, we have a motion in a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It looks like it passes 4-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming again and sharing all that.
Thank you.
So, now we're on to the report of the MCAS.
So, good evening, everyone. I want to thank Wareham Week for calling me and speaking to me prior to the article. I thought it was an excellent interpretation of the truth of where we were with the MCAS results, so thank you very much for that. I want you to know that we appreciate it. I write one test one day does not measure every student every day. To keep it all in perspective, there's a lot of energy around this one test that they're actually experimenting with at the moment and we have many, many reason to believe that it is experimenting because they're trying out many different ways of asking our students questions to gather information. And they're looking at how to do that from grades three through basically grade 10. We've had some wonderful successes this year. We feel as though, we take it very seriously, so I don't want to minimize it in that we, we take it seriously for what it gives us. So, it gives us some great information for us to then proceed. We use it as a formative rather than a substantive assessment, I would argue, more often than not. And so, but keeping it in perspective, it is one test. Desi's designation for the district, and we are very grateful for this because we have been off of that list now, I think, our third year in a row, where we have been substantial progress toward targets and not requiring assistance or intervention. We are very excited to, no offense to the Department of Education, but we are very happy when they are not here. I just want to model the, a little bit of thinking behind what we do with these results and what it means to where we go from here, but we actively analyze all the various data provided by MCAS. We identify areas of strength, acknowledge challenges, and in so doing, make decisions that teachers and leaders believe are in the best interests of students. So, we look at data, we look at the standards, we see where we did really well, where we might need to change things up. But we, but my message has been, and I will continue this message, we will only do what we believe as professionals in the field, what's in the best interest of our students. We are not in the test-taking business. We are not in the test-taking business, we are in the education business. And so, as we look, we may make decisions that we're not going to spend a lot of time with this particular area because we don't think it transfers, we don't think it's going to be beneficial for our students as they move through their life, right? So, so we're really looking at it critically, and we're making decisions based on that information. We look at trends, we look at patterns, um, areas of strengths, we connect that to practices, we put in place, replicate strengths across district, for example. Uh, we, we are always looking to improve writing, they've also added, thank goodness, a narrative on the MCAS, it was all about responding to text forever, how boring is that? I mean, I guess it's a good skill, right, but now kids get to write narratives, uh, which is really quite exciting to, in my opinion, as a former English teacher, I'm sorry, I have a bias there, but nonetheless, what we've done is, we've, um, we've now put writing in, uh, school-wide writing from grades kindergarten all the way through, and what happens then is they, they'll write, that writing is then divvied among teachers other than the teachers of the children, and everyone participates in analyzing that writing, and they get to see, um, what it, teachers who might not teach writing, for example, get to see what it, what kids are doing. And once that happens, they, it's, first of all, it's unbiased representation of the scores of that writing, but it also helps other subject areas to then promote certain things in their classes that they can implement daily. We discuss and change and improve our, our internal assessment systems, and we have quite a robust internal assessment system, and it's becoming more and more robust as we learn more and more about what we need. Um, one of my goals really is to know much farther ahead and be able to predict accurately the, the MCAS score. So if we have enough information about what our kids know and are able to do, then we should also know what to expect, we shouldn't be surprised. So we've, we're building those assessment systems, we've made some significant changes, um, this year, and we're analyzing those changes to see if they're beneficial, and we'll continue to look at that, I think we will always look at that. Um, we, we contacted Desi, um, and spoke to them about some of our, uh, we had a lot of questions that I feel they really couldn't answer to, to our satisfaction, I'm not alone in that opinion. Um, and, and we asked pretty pointed questions, and we did a lot of analysis on our own, so, I, I'm not sure that, I think they, they were a little bit, um, afraid of our questions, maybe, I'm not really sure. But, um, they need to be able to answer our questions better before we can absolutely say one thing or another about the kids in Wareham. Our kids are smart, they do amazing things here every single day. And I just sometimes become disheartened when that is not acknowledged because of a test that Desi is, is having our kids participate in, it, it just makes me a little crazy. So, I just wanna be really clear that we challenge the Department of Education maybe too often, um, but nonetheless, challenge them because they need to understand what, what we do, and I think sometimes they make decisions without looking at all of the various, um, elements that need to be looked at. Um, and we continuously throughout the school year, collect data and collaborate. Um, and, and also our, our teachers are extremely talented. So, I, I just wanna make that point, that we have unbelievable leaders, leading these incredibly talented teachers, that I hope will no longer feel stifled by anything the Department of Education is saying about Wareham. Right? So that's what we're working toward. That being said, I'd like to start with the Minnetonka Forest, um, grade three and four next generation and their department chairs that are now working collaboratively with Minnetonka and the middle school.
And when you get settled in, if you could just state your names and your positions, thank you.
Could you make sure you introduce yourselves and your positions before you begin?
Catherine Frain, Special Ed Department Chair.
Andrea Erickson, Unified Arts Department Chair.
Bonnie LaSorsa, Math Department Chair.
Jeanne Siemens, Principal of Minnetonka Forest.
Robin Murphy, Assistant Principal of Minnetonka Forest.
Sue Tabus, Science Department Chair.
So, good evening, so, this is gonna be a glasses-on, glasses-off presentation. I had surgery last week in my eye, so my eyes is not quite up to par yet. Um, so when we looked at the ELA scores, achievement and growth, we look at the, um, the full school, here we go. When you look at the various subgroups that we have listed up there in the chart, there are several of them where we have shown an increase. Um, some as high as 2.6 pu- uh, points, up to 3.0 points. We have some categories that, um, decreased, but maybe only by three-tenths of a point. And if you do the math, up to like 2.5 points. When we look at the scores, we look at who are the students that are in front of us, just so you kinda have an idea of, of what we do and, and where we go with this. We look at the item analysis, so the students, the questions, um, we download all of that, and we, we just start diving deep. We look at, you know, who has exceeded, who's not meeting, who is partially meeting, who's meeting everything. And we looked at some of the data where we found that in grade three with ELA, in 2012, we had, I'm sorry, in 2018, we had 12 students who did not meet the benchmarks, they had the category NM, not meeting. In 2019, that went down, so we had nine students. When we looked at the grade three math, in 2018, there were 36 students who did not meet, yet in 2019, we had 21. So it's showing some of the interventions that we're doing are working, um, with the instruction. Grade four ELA, in 2018, there were 18 students who did not meet it, and it was the same number in 2019. So we had to look at that. 2018, there were 31 students who did not meet it in math, 2019, it was 26. So our numbers are going in the, in the right direction. We also look at, um, who those students are, and we look at attendance. We have some students who have some chronically absent attendance that we work with the families. Um, we are monitored by the Department of Ed as, as well as all the schools on chronic absenteeism, we're rated for that. So we really have a, a huge campaign that we're working on, not only at the elementary, but I know at the middle school and higher. Um, in 2018, there were 199 students, um, I'm sorry, no, 2018 was a higher percentage of students who had chronic absenteeism than 2019. That's thanks to the efforts of the social worker, the letters that we're sending home to families, the phone calls that we're making to families, um, you know, even the nurses said they're doing some triage as far as what's happening, how can we help you? We have our social worker and our, um, school counselor working on a program, as well as the nurse, on HERO. If you are on our Minnetonka Facebook page, you would've seen the school counselor was dressed in a HERO costume. And HERO, H-E-R-O, is here every day, ready to learn, on time. So we are really stressing attendance as well, and being tardy. We have several students that are being tardy, and when you are not there at the beginning of the school day, it really impacts how your day begins. They're alw- they're behind, it impacts the teacher's instruction because now the teacher has to catch them up and so forth. So, those are some of the things that we do when we kinda dive into the ELA. When you look at the next slide, um, which is the math, there's a couple of subgroups there that had increased. One, we were very pleased with, the lowest-performing subgroup increased by 7.4 points. Um, they made great growth, as you can see in that particular column. Some subgroups, uh, some groups did decrease by a little bit. And here's the funny thing, is, um, Dr. Schwamn was saying with the Department of Ed.
This is a, this is a.
So, the Hispanic Latino group, last year on the 2018 Accountability Report, the official report, they didn't even score the Hispanic Latino subgroup because we didn't have the correct number of students in that cohort. So it was zero, yet there's a score here for that.
And we decreased 2.9.
2.9 percent.
How can we do that, how can that decrease? We don't, didn't, we weren't scored the previous year.
And, when you look at growth, it says not applicable, because it wasn't anything to compare it to the year before. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, when you go on to the, oh, I'm sorry, question?
Well, hold on, would you prefer if we, you did the whole thing, or questions in between?
I would prefer to go through it, but.
It's just for what the things mean, like when it says growth and what the N stands for on the chart, that's all I'm asking to clarify.
So growth is how much the students have grown from the grade three to the grade four year. You will only get growth in grade four, um, because they take the MCAS for the first time in grade three, and N is the number of students that took it in that particular group.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But just, what's the significance of, say, 40.4, what does that mean?
That's the percentage of growth that they've made from the year before.
Okay.
So ideally, you wanna be in the 50s or above.
Sure.
Um, so when we look at the, um, grade four ELA in math for all students, next slide.
This is all?
Yep. Huh?
That's all.
Didn't we just do that one?
Yeah, we did that one.
Yeah, we did that, that was the first one we did, and then the math, we just did. Mm-hmm, yep.
So now you're on grade four.
Yes, this one, ready? Um, so when we look, sorry, all my little notes here. When we look at the, the grade four scores, you know, we weren't 100% pleased with the scores, you know, we own that, we understand that, um, we really had to look deeply to find out what was going on with them. So, one of the items that we knew we needed to do was to work with our children that needed to be challenged. So we had, um, an accelerated math group, we had some of the Minnetonka Forest math teachers, the grade four teachers, work with one of the middle school math teachers. And she, um, assisted them using the math program and how they could, um, challenge those students and work in an accelerated pace, because that was one area, when we looked at the, um, winter FAS scores, we kinda saw a plateau, and as Dr. Schwamn said, when we're trying to gauge how the students would do for MCAS, that was one of the items that we looked at. So we got right on it after the winter scores, and we worked with the middle school math teacher. And then the grade four math teachers went back and they implemented that, so they had a small cohort of students, that were in the accelerated math. Now, we did start that later in the year, that's something that we can continue from the beginning of this year, moving forward, but it was late in the year. We then, we've done some preliminary, um, I call it data diving, just to kinda get a quick synopsis as far as what's happening here. For the math teachers, they are recognizing the fact that solving word problems was an issue. When they start looking at those questions and they start drilling down, that was an area where they felt that we needed to improve. So the teachers have set that as one of their professional goals. At the beginning of the year, um, teachers have to do a student learning goal and a professional learning goal. So that was one of the, uh, goals that they have. They also wanna increase exposure to strengthen, um, the, the word problems. They wanna work weekly with the students in collaborative, small groups, and I think the small group is really key. Communicate with each other, and the students would communicate with each other, and they would present strategies on how to solve word problems, 'cause sometimes learning from a peer is also very beneficial. Um, they would have the pre- and post-assessments when they're working on the word problems so they could see the, the growth, and the students could see the growth. They also wanna, uh, focus on the spiral review, because they can teach a math concept, and then they move on to the next thing, and if they don't keep bringing that concept back, then it's forgotten. And we don't wanna have concepts start in the fall, forgotten when it comes time for the, the test in the spring. So they're working on concept, uh, retention, and this year, we're doing content-level meetings with the department heads, so they have grades three and four together. So we look at vertical, we look at horizontal, um, we're working with them on data meetings as well. When we looked at, the, um, in addition to the content levels, we have data meetings, so more diving down into data, and I always remember Dr. Sylvia always saying he didn't like the word data, so, uh, sorry, Cliff, it's still here. So during the, the data meetings, they look at benchmarks, and the benchmark assessments, we had teachers working this summer with the department heads on creating various units, and we're also examining math software that we can use to support the curriculum, 'cause we wanna choose the, the right program, not just any program, um, at all. So when we're looking at the ELA, writing was one of the areas that we did wanna focus on. So the grade four teachers are also working on, um, creating writing portfolios. We used to have portfolios years ago, um, when we started. Um, so each student will have their own binder, we also recognize the fact, and this came from feedback from the middle school, that grammar and topic development were two areas where they felt, um, the students were really struggling with. So they're working with that as well. Um, the students will take ownership of their portfolio, they'll be able to see improvements as they're going forth. Um, we are keeping our school improvement goals in mind, so for student voice, they'll be able to have a choice on the topics that they're writing about. There'll be some non-negotiables that they have to follow, so some of those would be, um, they have to follow basic grammar rules, they'll have editing checklists, so when they have a writing piece, they'll be, um, checking that off, and they'll be able to see a decrease in their mistakes throughout the year. And again, they'll have pre- and post-samples as they go through the year to see the progress that they're making. So.
I think another part that we're working on, and, uh, was really helpful, and showing the. Commitment of our teachers and working together collaboratively, is both the ELA teachers and the math teachers are working together on this writing. The math teachers and the ELA teachers are both going to be doing writing every day with their students. So I think this is just something that's gonna be really valuable, and with the help of the, the department chairs, focusing that writing into what we need so that when they move on to the middle school, we're, they're ready to go. So really exciting, just working together, I think that's fantastic.
Um, they also wanna work as a team, an ELA team, um, for a professional learning commi- uh, community, it's called a PLC. So they wanna look at the REACH curriculum, they're determining priority standards that they really should be focusing on. Um, they're looking at creating curriculum apps, which has worked at this, it's continuing from the summer, having the interventions, um, that we've been using all along. And we'll continue, we started this last year, to have four writing days where all the students are writing, and then we take that writing, as you heard earlier, and it's shared, and the teachers are scoring each other's writing samples. So that will continue, um, and we do use software as well for ELA. And I know Mrs. Murphy is working with the staff on MCAS folders. We actually have a huge day tomorrow where they're really data-driving, um, to get even deeper, but you wanna talk about the folder you have?
So we have, tomorrow is our in-service day, so we've created a folder, um, the department chairs, we've shared our folders with each other, um, they have, one of the charts that they'll be really looking at is the differentiation between how the state scored and how our students scored, and, and where is that? And is, what do we need to focus on to get us closer to the state norm? So they'll be looking at that, they're gonna be looking at the student work, they'll be comparing our students' writing last, end of last year to what a three on MCAS looks like. Um, a lot of talking, they'll be working together as grade level, they'll be working together as content, and they'll be working together as third and fourth content, so they're gonna have a lot of different opportunities tomorrow. So we're kind of excited that this came out, and we're ready to, to roll with it. I'm just gonna add one more thing, is, when I looked at this information, and I just thought this was just telling of how we're moving forward, when we look at students who scored zero on their writing, that means they've got absolutely no points, we've always known that's been an issue. Students look at the writing, and they're like, I, I don't even know how to do it, I can't do it, I don't even know how to start. Well, in 2019, 2018, 32% of our students scored a zero. In 2019, 19% scored zero.
So we're really working with them.
So we're moving.
Can you say that again?
So, in 2018, 32% of our third and fourth grade students scored a zero on a, on a writing, on one of their writing.
They didn't attempt it, or they wrote.
They didn't attempt it, or they just.
One sentence.
On one question, okay, so there's, there's about, there's, there's three different writing questions. So in 2018, out of those three questions, 32% of our students scored a zero. In 2019, 19%, that's one year's.
And just having the writing days that we've been having, it, we have. And just having the writing days that we've been having, it, we have shown that it really has been working.
Thank you, impressive.
Yep. And for this particular one, this is the, the grade three score, so we're very pleased with this. And all the subgroups in math, we have shown improvement. In ELA, three out of the four, we've shown improvement with the not meeting, it stayed the same. So that, these are great. This is the group that had the interventions all the way from kindergarten. So they've had it from the beginning of the year. Our grade four group was the, the last group that didn't have the full interventions, they started later. It's for the ELA and the literacy. Um, so we're very pleased with the scores that we have here. So when you take your MCAS for grade three, it's really a combination of your, like, pre-K to three and you move forward. So we appreciate the work that's happening at the John W. Decker School and, um, moving forward. Yeah. When you look at the cohort tier, uh, from the grade four moving up, you can see, um, each of the cohorts from grade three up to grade four have improved in all the categories.
So.
Yeah.
This is a clarification? Okay, go ahead.
Um, this is the same group of students. So this is, so in two thousand seventeen, that was the first group to participate in the next generation MCAS test, so we actually have three years worth of data so we could create the chart, right? So if you see, you can see the progression for each year and where these kids were when they started and where they are now.
Yeah, and, and, and this is really helpful because when you, it's so, almost apples and oranges when you're looking at, okay, you would have a grade four. You know, that's not the same grade four kids. Year to year, but this is, this is following the same kids. Right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Great. So for the next slide, minus plans for continuous growth. Oh, it's summer slide, sorry. This particular slide, I had it afterwards. This is really telling because it, what it's showing is that the students are not making that regression during the summer. So. Is it that we have to touch maybe? I'll just keep talking meanwhile.
No, it's coming back.
Okay, good. Um, so, the colors represent, um, their level. So the red would be the, the students that are having the most, um, difficulty and not meeting the benchmarks. Up to the blue, which is they're exceeding, they're, they're where we want to see our students. So you can see, um, I can't see that right now. Uh, so when you look at grade two going, um, for the red, going from twenty-nine students, um, to fifteen. So that showed an improvement from grade two to grade three. For the orange category, they went from twenty-two to nine. So we're moving our students forward. The green category, you know, that's where they're meeting the benchmarks from fifty-five, although it went to forty-seven, some of those kids took a, a double hop and they went up to the blue category. So we went from thirty students to seventy-two, from second to third grade by the end of the school year. That was amazing. And we see the same, um, when we look at grade three going to grade four. Um, the red decreased from thirty-two to twenty-nine, the orange was nineteen to twenty, but again, those students are hopping over. When you look at the blue category, we had fifty-nine students, we're up to eighty-eight. So the work that we're doing, we have boosts that's happening in the, in the summer as well, with CARE happening in the summer. Uh, we're really pleased with where the progression that we're seeing our students.
Just clarifying again. So this was sort of an accident slide, I, I'm a little obsessed with data, right? I'm, I'm always looking and collecting and I just wanted to, I happened upon, we finished our first round of FAS testing in grades two, three, and four. And I got curious, of course, so I wanted to see where we were. Because when I started to work here, every single year I would come back or for two, it was, it was like a two years, really, cause I couldn't take it any longer. So students would go to kindergarten, they'd be sixty percent below the norm, they'd gain some, and they'd come back in first grade and be sixty percent below the norm again. Then they come back again and be sixty percent below. So it was like, there was that, there was this huge, it, it looked like kids never went to school. Every year they would come and they had, they had made gains, but it's like they didn't really hang on to what it is that they learned. So I got very excited when I started to collect this year's, um, data and looking at it. And I was like thinking, wow, this is kind of amazing because it looks like we're actually possibly solving this problem that's, that's happened for a long time. And I would argue, it happens in every district, by the way. It's not just Wareham, we have districts coming to see us now from all over the place because of this work. And it's pretty exciting, but I guess it's, we need to collect it a little more before I get, I'm optimistically excited, I guess, right? I just, but, but I, but I just, this is important. Because this is only September and in two thousand nineteen, this is what, these are our kids. This is like normal.
That's where you're starting.
It's where we're beginning and it's normal, it's manageable. We don't have any longer these massive groups of people that we are trying to mitigate. And, and, and they're getting older and it's harder to mitigate the problem, right? So it's, it's just exciting that the work that everyone is doing overall.
So moving forward, we have our ninety-minute literacy and our ninety-minute math blocks, um, in grades three and four. Uh, for the literacy and flexible grouping, we have our P one to P four groups. The P one is the group that needs the most help up to P four. The numbers in those groups and P ones are, um, smaller. Um, in P one and P two, we have the special ed teachers that are working in the classroom, so they're pushing in. So we saw some great growth for our special education, um, subgroups. So that's an area where we're seeing it's working. We have our power professionals who have received training that are working in the classrooms. Our OT works with students in the hallway with their yoga mats and crossing midline and doing Superman and, um, it's amazing when you walk by to see what they're doing. Um, we looked at the FAS that scores for the fall and strategies, we're looking at progress monitoring. So we do that three times a year and we're seeing some great baseline scores right now with FAS, um, that we can use moving forward. We have common benchmark assessments, um, the department chairs are working with the teachers on making sure those are done and, and analyzed with that in math and writing. Um, they facilitated, as I said earlier, some, some of the work that happened. We have regularly scheduled data meetings, content meetings, so they're running those meetings and they're working with the teachers. And we are ever so grateful that we have that support this year where they can work with the teachers on content, benchmarks, assessments, and they'll, they can look at that vertical alignment and see where our kids need to go and where they are. And, um, it really has been great having them, um, in addition to the evaluations because they can then see what's happening in the classroom and they give the feedback to the teacher when they're doing their evaluations as well. Um, working with the literacy consultant, um, we're including writing, it's a big focus right now. We also are working on science because we want to make sure we're beefing up the science piece, which I know Mrs. Saber is pretty happy about. Providing professional development to our new teachers, making sure they have the support that they need in literacy and math. And, you know, I just want to say overall, we're pleased that the accountability classification for Minot Forest remains, continues to remain at not requiring assistance or intervention, as we heard at the beginning of the slide. And that is due to the substantial progress that we are making at the school, which also reflects on the district. So does anyone have anything they would like to add?
Ms., well, Ms. Rossi's been waiting. Ms. Rossi?
Sorry, I'm just wondering, what was your percentage this year for your MCAS alts?
We had fourteen students and we scored all points possible on them. So between progressing and merging, we scored every point that we could get. And some of those students, um, took the regular MCAS in a certain content area with accommodations. So typically, MCAS also your substantially separate programs. Um, but in some of them, they may have had an alt for math, but they were able to take the ELA portion of the MCAS.
So what percentage wise of your student population qualified for the alt?
Sometimes it, I know in the district we have a one percent cap, but we have some very significantly challenged students.
That's why I'm curious what the, because I know that statewide, the average is the one percent. But with, you know, just my concern is, you know, for budget purposes later on, that if we need more help in those areas, because we have a higher than state average need for MCAS alts, just to know for future budgeting purposes for more Paris or more other people that are able to help with the alts. I just, I'm curious where we are per school percentage wise.
We had about three hundred and fifty-one. That was the N.
Three hundred and fifty-one, what's, what's?
Really?
Really?
It's about two, two and a half. Yeah, it's more than one, but we do base on, obviously, the, the student needs.
Oh, absolutely, I, like I said, I know the statewide average is what they expect, but.
Thank you.
Three point, I thank you.
It is a lot of work for the teachers to do this and I'm so grateful the Department of Ed has recognized that because they now are awarded PDPs for their teaching license, um, in order to do this.
Yeah, I remember helping put together and go through some of the portfolios, so I know a lot of the work that goes into it, which is why I'm hoping that, you know, like I said, if we are above that one percent, that we can get those teachers the help that they need to get those accommodated.
We give them lots of time, all the time that they need, they go to the various drop-ins. Um, we have veteran, very veteran, and even, uh, Mrs. Frain worked with them to see if they need any help. So great support.
Mrs. Bakayaki?
Um, so I think you, you answered some of my questions. One of them was, are MCAS results indicative of results of other assessments? So if you could predict what the MCAS results would be, would they be what, would you have predicted that?
I don't like one day, one test.
Right.
Because we have students that have high extreme anxiety when it comes to MCAS. We can't provide the students what would normally happen on a day-to-day basis when it's MCAS time. The teachers are hands-off, they can't even, if they've, to miss a question, they can't even go over and say, you missed that question. Whereas if it was a regular assessment and in the school, a math assessment, they would be able to do that.
We're getting closer to, to, to understand that, okay, we, we have some students that we know we're going to have to have support with. As we see them go through the year and we have, the state allows us for Mrs. Stevens to make accommodations for certain kids that are like, okay, they need, we need to have a quieter place for them or, not a separate location, but a quieter over there.
No, I completely agree, one day.
Small groups.
Small groups, in the classroom.
In the classroom.
Okay, and the chronic absenteeism, I mean, you're being, they're using that as a, you know, as a criteria when that's really something that you have no control over. So, and I know you're making, many schools are making a concerted effort on that front, so I, thank you.
Yeah, we do our best, but it's, it's up to the families and.
I mean, you have, you have no control over it and the kids often have no control over it, so, especially the young age. Yeah. Um, and I just want to say how fortunate mine it is to have a partnership with the middle school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's really great to see, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's awesome. All right, thank you.
Could, could we go back to, I guess, let's start with the Minot Forest Elementary School math. And this is for all students, three and four, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, I'll start off, so the lowest performing, that blows me away. You know, that really.
Yes.
Incredible growth on the lowest performing kids, those, those kids are getting the attention they need, they're learning and that, and that's great. But when I, when I count up all of these categories though, there's nine categories and in six of them, we're going down. What's going on with that?
So we were looking at the math and I think is edulastic one of the math components that would.
That's new.
That's new. Um, so when we start driving and drilling down, we look at what happened with the questions. Um, as I said, the, um, problem solving, the word problems seem to be a real issue. I hated word problems in school. You know, you meet them and, um, and I liked maths, but I didn't like that. So, we're looking at what else we can do to support the, those areas. So working with edulastic is one of them.
Okay.
And looking at the, the two of the categories, they have the NA. So again, we said, the Hispanic Latino, we, we weren't there the year before.
I don't, yeah.
Multi, um, and again, multi-race, it's NA from the year before, so there is really no growth. So even though the numbers went down, and I know Dr. Schwam and I had this conversation once about, all right, where are they getting this number? And we don't know and they don't know how they're getting the number.
All right, so let's, um, next slide, uh, Minot Forest, grade four, two thousand seventeen, well, yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that's it, yes. Uh, one, three, three, yes. All right, so, I've, on, on my, on my hard copy, I, I took a, a red line and I went right, I, I split everything above met and everything below met, right? And so, and you kind of go right to left with two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. So if, so in two thousand, so let's start with, uh, grade four, uh, ELA math. All students. So, in two thousand seventeen, it was thirty-five percent, um, met or exceeded. Two thousand eighteen, thirty-eight, and then two thousand nineteen, it crashed to twenty-two. Like, what happened there? Like.
So that's the ELA, the ELA is, is definitely the area that we saw and we need to definitely boost up the writing. Um, when we start looking at how many students had did, done the open response and everything.
Okay. Okay, but.
And this is.
I just don't like the, the trend, you know what I mean, it should be going up.
Well, as I said earlier, this is also the last group that didn't have all the interventions that we had. So we really were working on the P one, P two groups and trying to push in as much as we could for that particular.
But they didn't have the interventions in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen and they were better.
Can I, we had, go ahead, please. Can I just interject a couple of things? First of all, you're looking at different, like, and you said it before, these are different groups of children.
Yeah.
And so that's substantial from year to year in a lot of ways, whether you're looking at, um, math scores or ELA scores or discipline, different groups of kids. The other thing that I think was important to think about last year was, it was a major transition in schools. And we know from past history across the state, not just in Wareham. Um, it used to be for us, when kids came to sixth grade, you'd see a drop. I mean, it's about, it used to be fifteen points is what they expect when, when children transition from schools. So last year, when Minot came in to the middle school building, it wasn't just the kids that transitioned, it was also the teachers and the rooms. And I, if this is what it looks like next year, I think you could say that it's a trend. But last year was a major transition for everyone involved. Um, from the department chairs working with teachers, we changed, everything about their lives changed. So I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with you and we're definitely looking at it a lot. But I do think that that, for the, especially for the Minot students and the Minot teachers, was a, a huge impact.
So, so when we move the whole school to a new school in twenty twenty-one, can I expect wholesale plummeting for all grades?
Wholesale plummeting, it, it will be a change.
If we got a new school, they're going to say like, yo, you know, you gave me a new school and this, you don't, you can't, the scores are plummeting.
It happens, it happens.
It statistically follows no matter what, which is when we were having this discussion about when we move. I was, I, I think I said at the school building committee, we need to be ready because, right? Because there will be a transition and that transition always causes that, no matter what. No matter what we do, no matter how it goes.
And, and I think you see with the third grade is, it's not as dipping because they're.
We're moving anyway.
They're moving anyhow, and it, it is a different thought. And you're talking about third graders who moved into fourth grade, coming to a new school, realizing their school's no longer.
They moved three times.
That, that's, that's, that's a tough thought and their class sizes, again, that was, it was a, it was a highly populated class.
So, well, did you want to finish a thought?
Well, I was also going to just say that I recently read a report that said, um, that parents, parents who say to their children that they were not good in math growing up. So a parent that says that to a child decreases that child's achievement score by fifteen percent. And I do think that the nerves, that, that's across the country, I mean.
Thank God my son's the anomaly, because I was, I told him, I was terrible.
I had your son in middle school, you didn't, you didn't tell, you, you never told him it was okay to not be good at math.
Right, but I told him, I did tell him I did terrible in math.
That he should do better. But I think the nerve, I think that, that the fears of the parents last year played into that transition as well. Because I, I know listening to the students. Because I, I know listening to the students, the fourth grade students now, the difference between the fourth graders this year and their comfort in what they're doing, and the fourth graders last year is tremendous, so.
Okay, so, so you, you may have kind of already answered the questions, but just to continue the thought, if you move over to, um, that was ELA. I'm going to talk about math now, two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. So if, if I add up those numbers, I've met and exceed, two thousand seventeen's thirty-one percent, two thousand eighteen, forty-one percent, pretty impressive. And then we, we crash again to twenty-four percent in two thousand nineteen. So, so, so I don't want, you, you pretty much kind of answered it, I think, in the same way, but, but that's, uh, that's grade four. Grade three, different story, right?
I also add, last year, when we moved from Minnetonka to the middle school, we lost at least fourteen kids in the district to school choice. We had four last year, and several of those families came back because of the reach-out that we did to them. But all those fourteen students that left, I remember when we looked at the names, those were some of our top students. So you see the decline in the top scores because they left.
So, so you, you always see that, but now, you said fourteen? Would you, would you say it was a good mix, though, of kids, not just all the top kids?
No, it was not.
It was a lot, most of them were top kids?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so now we go to the grade three.
But we, but we had a, a good percentage of them come back this year to come in fourth grade.
Oh, oh, yeah, right, yeah, I hear a lot about that, the, the high school, too.
Yeah.
So, so now we go on to grade three, and it's kind of, it's kind of flipped, I guess, right? So.
Yes.
So now we look, and it's, uh, two thousand seventeen, met or exceeded on ELA, twenty-seven percent. And it's static in two thousand eighteen, twenty-seven percent, and then, and then forty-four percent, two thousand nineteen. And that's, 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 that's great, and that's, so those are the kids that are getting.
Those are the, these are our test group. These students started with the Carrie Thurston work in February of two thousand seventeen. So it was the sixteen-seventeen school year, February, it was the new roof was built. We waited till ki, the people got out of the gym and the teachers and back into their classrooms. And we started this work then, and this is this group.
Okay, wow, interesting, because I know, I know, I know someone that left the district because of that, and they, they kind of missed.
Sad for them.
They kind of missed out. This is great.
They should have stuck around.
So, so, so again, so that was ELA, and, and our math, two thousand seventeen, we're looking at twenty-five percent. Uh, we had a little dip, two thousand eighteen, uh, twenty-two percent, and then, and then a jump, thirty-two percent, great. That's, that's, again, that, that, it's kind of explains everything you had mentioned earlier, and that, how strong that grade-three class is, and that hopefully they're going to stay a great, a strong grade-four class and, and keep going. Let's see. Okay, I think that, that was my observations on that. Um, let's see, oh, I'll wait for the middle school, all right. All right, so I, thank you, thank you very, I, I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of a mixed bag, but you're still partially meeting, you know, but, but I, I, I'm really.
Substantially.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really encouraged by grade-three and the work that's going to, you know, come behind it. I really am, sincerely, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you have to sit.
Can we reshuffle seats? Thank you.
Before you begin, um, I, I just have to say that, for the first time since I've worked in the Wareham Public Schools, the middle school is the school to be celebrated extensively for their accomplishments and what happened as a result of all of this work for all, for the time, and not giving up and keeping your, you know, keeping your foot on that gas pedal, uh, working collectively, cohesively, collaboratively, um, tirelessly, many, many more hours than anyone would ever imagine. And as a result of that, I shared the, the scores kind of secretly, and I'm going to give myself up here. When they first came out, I, I, I texted Tracy, and I, she was heading camping, and I was like, do you want, do you want to see them? Like, I didn't want to bother, you know what I mean? Like, sometimes it can be, I said, do you, you want, she's like, yeah, send them to me. She texts me back, she was crying, uh, in just pure joy, because it is, it's a different look now than it has ever been. So just, I just want to say that to begin with, because they're going to talk about all the work that they still need to do, and how much, you know, they want to do better, because that's what they do, but I just want to make that statement clear, so.
Thank you.
Off you go.
Um, I think everyone introduced themselves except for.
Sandy Pont, Assistant Principal at the Middle School.
Welcome.
Tracy Cote, Principal. So thank you for having us tonight, and we are here to celebrate. Um, I think everybody realizes and knows that for many years, the middle school was the reason that the district was a level-two and then a level-three. And, um, so we have been tortured by MCAS scores, um, for many, many years. So, um, when the scores came out, it did mean a lot to us. And what you don't see is what the Department of Ed gives to us as a reason. Um, so when you look at this ELA slide, um, the middle school met or exceeded, um, our targets in ELA, five out of eight subgroups. We exceeded four. And if you go to math, um, so the, the Department of Ed gives us our targets. Obviously, we're not exactly where we want to be. We want to be that we all met, we exceeded, um, but, but we're getting the targets that they're setting. We are exceeding them or meeting them. In math, um, we exceeded or met, um, I think, uh, six out of eight of the subgroups. In science, we exceeded five out of the five subgroups. Our growth in ELA was high. Our growth in math was typical, high in areas, low in some areas. That's us. We're proud, I'm proud of my staff, I'm proud of my students. Um, we've worked hard to get where we're at. Um, as Dr. Schwam said, there's always room for improvement. We need to get everyone to met. We want to get everyone to exceeded expectations, and, um, that's where we're headed. We don't have a slide for chronic absenteeism, um, but the middle school was deplorable the year before. We worked on that. We exceeded in seven out of eight subgroups that target set for us. I'll take questions. I mean, those are the scores where they are. When you look at, those are the percentages. They're apples to oranges, they're different students. Um, we want to be in the blue for all of our students, that's our goal.
Um, any questions for the panel?
Sorry.
Uh, Ms. Bakayaki, go ahead.
I guess I don't really have a question. Um, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hard work. Um, and like you said, when you're comparing apples to oranges, it's so, the slides that show the same cohort are really the ones that I look at the most, because, I don't know, they seem to be the most meaningful. Is that, would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult area to assess. Um, our sixth grade, um, staff in ELA worked really hard on, um, writing. They were very displeased the year before. Um, the expectations for writing are tremendous. Um, we're looking at narratives, and we're looking at open responses, and, um, and it, it, with the new type of MCAS, it was really, really challenging for us when you introduce typing skills to fifth graders, and especially, Minnetonka didn't focus on this, but when you actually see a third grader typing, it, it's, it's so strenuous for them to do. Um, and so it, just the dexterity that they have to use, the fine motor skills to type an essay of what is expected, what caliber of an essay. So in sixth grade, the, the teachers, um, were like, we are going to do this, and we need to do this differently, and we, and, and they did. And they exceeded the state. Um, and so, yes, I do look at apples and oranges and oranges to oranges, but, um, you know, it, it's always an uphill battle right now. Um, as Dr. Schwam said, when, when you're looking at my fifth graders right now, what I'm only looking at, twenty-three percent of them are meeting expectations in ELA. That's huge. When you're, when, when the class sitting in front of you, seventy percent of them aren't meeting those expectations. But now, the expectations from the year before, and now they need to meet the new expectations. Um, it, it's always an uphill battle, so.
Well, no, I mean, I understand those aren't the numbers that the state is looking at, or, you know, but at the same time, they're still important.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Ms. Rossi.
And I, I'll ask the same question I asked of, of Minnetonka, where you guys fell with your MCAS alt percentage, if you knew.
Um, two point five, we had thirteen alts.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Spear, do you have anything?
Uh, mine isn't as much of a question maybe as just a general statement of, um, I mean, it's exciting to see what's happening, but it's exciting to see the culture of the middle school, the teachers, the admin, the students. It's, it's like nothing we've seen in the last few years, and it's, it's nothing but positive and, and continuing to be positive. And it's, you can see the results of it, and it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, and it, it is a different feel, um, that we're experiencing. It's a good feeling. Thank you.
All set? Okay, so looking at the growth only, they're phenomenal. They're, they're, they're scream, they're scream out the top of the roof, awesome. It, it's, it's like, wow, I mean, this, this is great. And, and I'm, I'm going to actually ask for some candor, because the only change I see from last year to this year is the principal. So what, 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 what was it about the principal that, that made this work? And I'm asking the panel. Come on.
So, um, he was in the building the other day filming for our next presentation, and he asked.
Brian Switzer.
Yeah, and he, I didn't remember his name, but he asked, sorry. But every teacher that he interviewed, he asked the same question, um, which is interesting. So I, I think you're going to hear some snippets of it in a couple of weeks. But for me, for what I hear, and this is my fifteenth year, um, it's really about non-negotiables. And Mrs. Cote started the year off strong with parents, with students, with teachers. And so the conver, and some, some of it is as small as things like, we've always said we don't allow Dunkin' Donuts in the building from children. We've always said that, that they should not bring in anything but water bottles. But last year, she met them at the door and they threw them away. And I would assume a few parents called, um, but they only called once. You know, this is a non-negotiable, and that wasn't the only thing by any means. But it was very clear throughout the whole staff about why we were there and what the process was, and, and that the children were our most important priority, and that's what we were doing. Um, and the other thing that can never be minimized at the middle school, and, um, I learned it really well last year, because my dad passed away.
Sorry.
So we had, um, Southwest Loves Me, I made five trips between January and April to Nashville and back. But I cannot, the, the staff, the students, I got thirty-seven versions in different languages of Baby Shark to my email from my accelerated class. I mean, I cannot begin to tell you the feeling in that building. Um, the other thing that's happened, at least in the math department, was, um, we started a phenomenal accelerated math program that we've been looking to do for years, that really prepares our math students to be ready for dual enrollment, so that they finish, um, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade math in two years. Um, we started core math classes where we, students who were close to proficient, um, but just needed a little bit, had an extra math class that I say is more fun. I doubt the kids would say that, but, um, so, I mean, we're really looking at, and we're doing the same thing at Minnetonka. We're really looking at that data, and how can we change the lives and the attitudes of, of every student? I would say, um, we have social responsibility classes now that change the way these students, you know, that are there to help those students, and I don't have one, but I watch them across the hall. And the student who would never have spoken to you at the beginning of the year, I don't even know, but he knows that he addresses all teachers, and he says, good morning, Mrs. LaSorsa, and good afternoon, and have a nice day. Those are things that they learned in school with that support, and he left a much happier child. And I think we can say that for all students, and I talked too long, so somebody else can do it.
And, 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 and when I said about the principal, I meant, I meant, I didn't mean just the prior principal. I meant all, I mean, ever since I've been following this, that, there's probably been about four principals or something, you know what I mean? So, 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 so clearly, the, the, the differ, I mean.
The, the staff and the students have always had the potential. I just think the focus may not have been on academics. So the administrative team needed to set the tone and to follow through with what we set. So our priority is academics. The children know the priority is academics. The adults in the building know the priority is academics. If someone is disrupting the learning environment of others, they will be removed. They will have a chance. Um, we spend a great deal of time of being proactive rather than reactive. So we spend a tremendous amount of time in the summer, the department chairs work in the summer, but they also get a tremendous amount of emails from me. Sandy is a wonderful, um, person of ideas. Um, so she comes up with, she'll throw ideas at us, and we'll be like, no, we need to do this, we need to do that. So we look at individual students and what their needs are, and we try to fulfill those particular needs. So social responsibility came out of that. RISE program came out of that. Special education students will look at our students that are experiencing issues, will do behavior plans, um, and will implement mentors for them, um, and really providing them with specific targeted interventions that are proactive and not reactive. When we're reactive, um, we're, we're acting out of, um, fear and, and, and pressure. And so we're really trying to backfill those things all summer, um, and we come in with a really, really strong plan. Um, and the teacher's sole responsibility is to, is education, and when they need support, they have the support immediately.
And, and I want to apologize, because I think I was kind of unfair to you in the past, because I, with the, with the discipline issues that we were seeing there and, and such, and, and with all the assistant principals that are there, and I'm always told it's all about, you know, they're, they're there for discipline and such, whereas you were really there for curriculum, right? And I didn't know, I, I just lumped you all in, and, and, and when you were in.
I never wanted to be part of discipline.
When you, when you, when you were the interim or the acting principal, I, I heard, I heard great things. I really did, and from all the right people, the people I trust, you know, the, the teachers that I hear from.
Thank you.
And, and so when, when you came on as, as the full-time, the real principal, I already had high expectations, and, and you've exceeded them still. So this is, this is incredible. I, I couldn't be more happy. Yeah, um, so, I mean, but I still have to do my job, all right? So, so, so I was talking about the growth, and I love the growth, but there's a disconnect here that I, I, I can't reconcile in my brain, and I'm hoping. So let's go, let's start with grade five, right, middle.
This one.
Uh, yes, yeah. So, so again, I, I draw that same line for, for these, for, for these figures and such. So when we look at, like, so, so we have, so we have, we have these great growth numbers, and then, and then I'm looking at this, and it doesn't make sense. It's like, so two thousand seventeen, met or exceeded, we were at thirty-eight percent. Two thousand eighteen, fifty-one percent, that was great. And, and then we went down, two thousand nineteen, at forty-one percent, but yet everything's telling me the growth is great. So like, what's going on there?
So it means that we're, we're progressing and we're moving along to our targets. No, they're not all met and exceeded, but they're still growing. So when you have twenty-three percent of the students that are coming in that aren't meeting expectations, it, you know, math is not always going the way that we want it to go, and that's why we're implementing some new things that you'll hear about on our last two slides, um, because we're trying to, to throw out ideas, and hopefully that, um, we'll see the growth that we want to see. So you can't, you can't go, you're, we're growing, we're meeting the targets that we need to meet each year, right? Most of the time. Not only did we meet them, we exceeded most of them this year. So we're getting to the point where we need to be all met or exceeding.
And that growth score is not, um, Desi gets that growth score per student by comparing a student with others at the same level that that student is. And a fifty means that that student grew at the same rate as other people. So if the child scored a four ninety-five, they're only comparing them to other students who scored a four ninety-five before. And if. if, sometimes you can have a growth of fifty, but an achievement score that went down, because all the kids who had a four ninety-five the year before also went down, so, and then those growth scores are an average of all the growth scores, so it's not a simple percentage, it's sort of an odd kind of, but it's a really fair one, because it's comparing students to other students where they are.
Okay, I accept that, I don't believe you're at the point, there's similar results in the other grades, but, I'll take that, does anyone else have anything else for the middle school?
I do have my last two slides, if you want to see them, if you don't, I'm good.
Who want to see them?
I just thought I'd throw that out there, so, we have implemented some new programming during summer school, any student in grades five through seven that failed math had the opportunity of taking summer school, so if you failed just one subject, we offered summer school to all of those students, many took us up on that, if they did not go to summer school, we are having them take two math classes, so students can be enrolled in a sixth grade and a seventh grade math class, or in a fifth grade and a sixth grade math class, they're not liking that, but again, it's the message that I'm sending, I'm hoping that the message that I'm sending is you need to focus, you need to pay attention, you need to pass math, and ELA, obviously, in science and social studies, but our, the math department feels strong that they needed this, so we're attempting this new strategy, special education, we didn't have core math in special education classes, we have two classes this year for special education students in core math, they're very small, maybe four, five or six students in those classes, we also implemented a grade five social studies class with a strong focus on embedding reading strategies in that, so it's for regular ed students that from their scores at Minnetonka in fourth grade are really still struggling readers, but not special education students, this class that Mrs. LaSorsa was talking about, we've always had a social responsibilities class in seventh grade for a couple of years, we saw great success with that, and so we've instituted that in sixth grade, and Ms. Tabor is running that class, and meeting with great success so far, we have a continuation of our RISE program, and we have Project Lead the Way classes and trained teachers, not classes, but trained teachers in grades three through seven, curriculum and assessment practices, we are doing benchmarks, you've heard about Edge Elastics, I've always been doing benchmarks, but we've moved it to Edge Elastics, which does model very much taking a test like MCAS, and you can customize the test, so we're very excited about that, we have a new, we're not using FAS this year at the middle school, we're using NUIA, MAP Growth, for reading, math, and science, some of the data that we're collecting by using that test is phenomenal, we're learning how to test, we've probably tortured kids the last couple of weeks, but I do think it will get better, and we also have, through this MAP Growth, we have NUIA math skills that we can use with our core math classes, so we're really excited about this, it's an intervention-type math program, and we're only using it with a small population of students this year to pilot that, we have common writing room, it's rubrics in grades five through seven for the narrative and the text-based essays, and we have a consistent use of common graphic organizers, which was huge this, last year for us, the special education department and the humanities department came together and developed the narrative graphic organizer that we didn't have in previous years, which I think really helped with some of our scores this year. That's it.
Anyone have any more questions?
For the summer class for math, how many people did you have, or how many children?
I didn't bring my exact numbers, but I think we had seventeen students that took math.
Was it paid, was, did you have to, was there a fee?
Yes, there was a fee.
How many people should have participated, seventeen?
I think, do we have, like, ten taking two class?
Not even that.
So a majority of them chose to do it over the summer?
And some didn't, I mean, the parents called me, had a conversation, "We're doing this, we're doing that," I'd rather them take, they knew in the letter that I sent home, that if you did not participate in the summer program, you wouldn't take two math classes.
And they can test out of that math, second math class, at the end of the first term, if they're making progress.
Thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
So with the second math classes, what would they have been taking if they weren't taking, like, what is that?
Missing Unified Arts classes.
That's what I was wondering, thank you.
I had an odd-bell question, what do any of you guys think of the old house system? Was there any benefit to that?
There were definite benefits to the house system, as middle school teachers, we're team teachers, so we want to be in a small team, we want to have common planning time, that just, we're not, it's not possible for us, but one of the things that we noticed, and we really noticed this when dual enrollment took place, so, at the middle school, we're used to having heterogeneous groups of students, I mean, elementary school heterogeneous groups, so you have really top students, middle students, lower students, all working together, so I can model my writing, I can work in a collaborative math group, and I can benefit from that, all four students, if they're in a collaborative group, can benefit from that, what we noticed was, when we're taking the houses, we really needed to have the houses heterogeneously grouped, when we started to do STEAM versus humanity, we were tweaking that heterogeneity, this grouping, when we started taking out dual, we really tweaked, we really felt, we didn't have the levels, so we were really feeling that imbalance, and that was creating some unintentional behavioral problems, because we didn't have those real high role models in those classes.
It became more differentiated?
Less differentiated, a lot less, a lot less differentiated, and, you know, high schools everywhere, you know, they have the leveling, CPs, honors, APs, but with the younger students, we were really seeing the downfall of that, so.
Just curious, thank you. All right, with that, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so before they begin, while they're setting up, I see that we're approaching ten o'clock, so can we have a vote, maybe, to go beyond ten o'clock, if necessary? So, can I have a motion to do that?
I make a motion to go beyond ten o'clock if necessary.
Second? Oh, hold on. Oh, absolutely, oh, sorry.
She wants to stay. It's fine.
I love it. Yeah, she wants to go.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you're all set. Do you want to go home?
Okay, so, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Barely, four zero zero.
We're getting delirious. Mind if I just open?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I just wanted to say, thank you all for coming, and being so patient, being the last in the line of the MCAS presentation, the high school is very interesting, because it was the first year that they've participated in the Next Generation MCAS, so we really only have one for English and Math, they did the Legacy MCAS for Science, which they're changing those questions all of the time, they're using some Next Generation, some Legacy, they're sort of in flux with that test at the moment, the Department of Ed, and so that's an interesting, that's an interesting dynamic, what I would like to say is that we have a lot of issues with the way in which they chose to judge us under this current circumstances, things changed us when we added the eighth grade to the high school scores, so it changed a lot of other things, the Department of Education gets very frustrated with schools that are eight through twelve, because it doesn't fit quite nicely into their analysis, because there are only a hundred or so of those schools in the state that operate eight through twelve, so they were finding it very difficult to quantify accurately, so that they could report what was real to us, and we had, I sent emails, I had conversations, we had group conversations with them, I'm serious when I tell you, that they really, they could not really answer our questions, and we did a lot of analysis and a lot of comparing, and a lot of looking, so I just need you to keep that in mind as we begin this presentation.
Thank you, so my name is Kim Kavicki, and I'm the Assistant Principal at Wareham High School, I focus on curriculum and instruction, and Scott Palladino is the principal, and he is very sorry that he couldn't be here tonight, he had a prior family commitment, but very much wished that he could be here, so, and then I'll go ahead and let everyone introduce themselves.
Michelle Medina, Math and Foreign Language Department Chair.
Andrea Cannon, Assistant Principal of Special Ed.
Brent Ruder, Science, Technology, and Wellness.
Mike Murray, Humanities Department Chair.
All right, so we wanted to start out with a slide that I think is pretty powerful, because we're comparing our legacy scores, so the legacy scores are the scores on the old tests, and the way that the competency determinations were made, so the competency determinations on the old tests were, you know, the advanced proficient, needs improvement, and failing, and so we've changed that, and now we're aligned with what the grades three through eight tests are, with the exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting, so as you can see, if you compare the 2018 ELA grade ten scores over to the Next Generation scores, meeting expectations is actually a much higher standard now, so, in order to sort of test into that level, students, for what the old proficient standard is, they're actually, if they're in the meeting expectations standard, they are more on track to be academically successful in college and career moving on, so, what we're seeing is that those students, actually by the state's definition, have a more than fifty percent chance of succeeding in college, if they're getting into that meeting expectations, and that sort of aligns with where, kind of where advanced was in the past. Okay, and then, so then with the high school tenth grade test, you know that that's a very high-stakes test, because it's one component of whether or not students are going to earn a high school diploma, so we wanted to take a minute and just look at this slide, which basically, if you see in the middle, between the two bars, the state, they aligned the new scores for passing with what the percentages were for passing last year, so for last year, you see there were three percent in the failing category, so they kind of aligned that over, and there are also three percent that are considered to be in the not meeting, but also not passing, so the reason that this is important is because students are going to be receiving scores, and they could potentially be in the not meeting expectations category, but the five, that upper five percent, they're still going to be considered passing, and will still be able to earn a high school diploma, without having to retake the old test. And so, the big thing here is, so we're just highlighting the competency determinations, and basically, on the legacy test, the legacy's focus was much more on, in general, in regards to the subject matter, whereas the Next Generation's focus is much more on kids actually meeting the grade level expectations, that's very, very important for that Next Gen test, and so we're going to go into the Wareham High School grade eight ELA, pass it off to Mr. Murray, he's going to talk about that.
Sure, so, this slide shows the subgroups, and there are two subgroups we somewhat exceeded the state target for, in students with disabilities and lowest performing, one thing about this test, speak to both tenth grade and the eighth grade, English test is, the writing is a different ballgame, so that students need to do a lot more analysis, they're usually reading two pieces and doing a lot of comparisons, sometimes inserting themselves into the piece in terms of pretending to be a character, write a letter, stuff like that, so it's a different kind of thing, that we're modifying our classroom strategies and our common assessments, both last year and this year, to meet these challenges, one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, was that teachers have student learning goals, which were actually finalized a couple days ago, October first, student learning goals across the board in English, all target student growth in these areas, my team tenants, they like to call themselves, they're literally talking about this stuff night and day, via text message and whatnot, but yes, so it's a, that's the mission, basically, primarily, to, you know, find out what's, you know, going to make kids engage in greater topic development, particularly on the writing portions of these two tests.
Okay, so for math, so this was the first year that the eighth grade was at the high school, so again, we saw a big transition, having the eighth grade for the first time, the kids had the transition, teachers had the transition, so given that transition, we're pretty pleased with the results overall for eighth grade, similar to ELA, two subgroups to highlight was the students with the disabilities and students with lowest performing, both exceeded DESI's target, which is fantastic, and one thing we are adding to the eighth grade this year, is we added IXL for them this year, that's something they didn't have last year, so that's one thing that'll help boost the scores even more moving forward.
Going on with that theme of transition, when it comes to the grade eight science, similar to the others, this was also a year of transition, in terms of the teachers, both myself and Beth Giafrieda, it's our first time teaching eighth grade, just getting a handle on the curriculum, and students adjusting to taking the computer test, and looking at the numbers there, within the range, Ms. Giafrieda and I talk quite freely, along with the rest of the science colleagues, that the grade eight science test is, it's an interesting one, because it covers three years of science over a number of domains, and it's honestly a crapshoot, quite honestly, as to what bits of knowledge they're going to pick out, especially, as Dr. Schwann was mentioning, DESI really is going through some fits and starts about the direction they want this assessment to take, such that we, as science teachers, you know, we get the data, we crunch into the data analysis, and there's always a percentage of questions that we just say, "Okay, well, that one, just, that was an anomaly, I guess, you were really focused on the anatomy of a worm that year, and it was never written anywhere," but they just really went and drilled down on the anatomy of a worm, to use a particular example, which was funny, but not that funny, so, anyway, so we are actually looking forward, truly looking forward to having more data as the years go on with this, but it's going to take a few years to get a baseline, and really looking for some more clarity from DESI, especially from the science group, which has been, even more so than English and Math, the last to the party, they were the last to finalize their standards, you'll see next year, the science high school will be the only paper-based test left still, so, it'll be a slow transition, but we'll be crunching the numbers all along the way.
So with this slide, you're looking at three years of the same cohort, so, these are the students that we had in eighth grade in 2019, then their seventh grade scores 2018, and their sixth grade scores in 2017, so, in that 2018 to 2019 kind of jump, we're still seeing that transition, a big transition year from grade eight to the high school, I think something that you potentially can highlight here is just moving kids from one category to the next, in terms of the number of kids in the not meeting, and then seeing some of those moving up into the partially meeting, so gaining some ground in those areas, yeah.
I've spoken to many of the main issues, but I'm not real sanguine about these growth numbers, but it's, I've reached that not-so-envious point where I have DESI targets of a hundred and ninety-nine point six, so, well, again, it's, and when you look at that, it's, you know, you're looking at sometimes one person, sometimes two, but, in fact, you know, relationship building is a huge part of what we do in any school, and at the high school certainly, and that's a big part of what we have to do this year, is, you know, get right down to those individual students, and make sure that they're ready when they walk in that day.
Okay, so for math, so again, this was our first year with the test online. So we're using this data as a baseline for moving forward. And we were really fortunate that DESI actually released the entire MCAS test, like we've been able to see all the questions that the students had. So we've really dove in and looked at each of those questions and the higher level thinking and the specific questions that they asked, and we're adjusting curriculum based off of what we're seeing. So teachers have already looked at all of the questions and we're diving through the data so we can make adjustments to make more gains for next year. We do have six students that will be retesting in November, but again, for it being the new test on the computer, six is a great number for moving forward. And again, this is a baseline, so we're only looking for gains from here.
In terms of the high school science numbers, I pored over this data far more than was probably healthy, in part because every year since I've been doing this, we've, the science scores have shown growth and shown growth. And I hold true to what Dr. Schwam said, that the one test one day doesn't, you know, come close to comparing what we do every day for all kids. And so when I look at this, I was really trying to pick it apart and thinking, okay, where did the drop come from? Because the way we look at data in the high school is similar to what they, our colleagues in elementary school are saying, which is we take the group of kids who actually took the exam in a, you know, in a given year, and then we do the item analysis and we reflect upon our teaching and our work with those students based upon that. The data you're looking at here are two snapshots that each snapshot encompasses anywhere from two to three different years of kids, based upon when they took the test, if they happened to, for reasons of just academic readiness, been retained in grade nine and then took it again later. So in teasing apart the data, the biggest effect I could find was really just a kind of an odd cohort effect of, there was this year where we happened to have a large, larger than normal group of students who were retained in grade nine, and those scores were, those students moved forward, more passing the test than we frankly expected, but those scores came out in 2019, the numbers you see there. And that also coincided with probably our lowest group of dual enrollment kids as a proxy. So when I looked at it, I looked at the 2018 and I said, oh yeah, 2018 was actually an anomaly in that we looked too good in that year. And if you look at the trend line going back to, say, 2015, there's gains in every category and then in 2018, we surged forward quite a bit. And then now this one is encompassing that two-year clump together, so. But moving forward, and Ms. Kavicki will talk about this in the next slide, but we are looking to partner with math in really using the core math in grade nine time to work on their applied math skills, because essentially that's what the physics test is, is applied math. And then also drilling down on data with, using IXL in science, we've got two 9th grade teachers who are chomping at the bit actually to use IXL in science right now. So we're going to pilot it this year with, in math, or with math skills rather. But again, coming down the difference between doing good and looking good, I'm happy to talk about honey and all the other things that we think we do to actually be good.
Skeletons.
And skeletons and all the APs and all that.
All right, so with this slide, you're looking at advanced coursework completion. And so I think we're really pleased with this slide and the growth that we've shown. So overall, we've exceeded DESI's target for advanced coursework completion rate. In general, our AP, our IB, our dual enrollment numbers in total just increased across the board last year, and that trend is certainly continuing this year, which is great to see. And for the past few years now, and I think we're starting to see, or reap the benefits of this, we've done a lot of work with expanding our pathways to the higher level classes in math specifically, given that it builds on prior knowledge. And you know, you can only get, you can only get to calculus if you've had a certain set of prerequisites in order to set you up to get there. So we try to make sure that kids have a wide range of ways that they can get there and access that higher level, those higher level classes. We also had several students now participating in AP and IB courses who are students with disabilities. And so that was a, that was a big, a pretty big jump considering we were at zero the first year. We have very high enrollment numbers at BSU and we also have a couple of students with disabilities that are dual enrollment at BSU. So we've been working with the college in terms of disability student services there and helping them transition over to get the accommodations that they need. And then also last year, another reason I think this went up was we had quite a few virtual high school classes that we offered online, where students actually took AP courses through virtual high school. And there's actually a teacher on the other end of that instructing them. It's not just a, you know, computer module with videos. And then another great thing to highlight, the four-year graduation rate, so we have seen a significant increase of 8.6% in the four-year graduation rate, exceeded DESI's target of 84.1 and as such in all subgroups. So this was huge improvement also to be seen with the students with disabilities. We went from us rating 60% to 83.3. So I think that is very exciting. And so a lot of that, I think, is, it's due to a variety of reasons, and some of them that I would highlight, we have lots of structures in place. So we have the dean structure at the high school where students have the same dean for four years. So you have that adult that gets to know them well. You have the students, they all have an advisor that they have for four, now it's five with the 8th graders there, five years. We also have a pretty robust student support council process where we meet twice a month. It's admin, deans, department chairs, counselors, we invite teachers, the teachers submit feedback and we sit to talk about specific interventions we can put in place to help these kids. We had the sale program with credit recovery, that's been huge with helping kids get back on track to graduate in four years. And then just all of the relationship building, I know that was brought up, but it's really everyone, every student in the building has someone that they can connect with. And I think that that has been really, really important for kids as they're going through their high school years. And so in terms of the data, we just, we take the process really seriously. It is certainly, you know, it's been said, one test one day, but we can gain some valuable information from that data. And we've spent a considerable amount of time of the summer, since schools started breaking down the data by student, by class, looking at teachers and even seeing like which teachers have certain, have groups of kids performing better in certain standards, and how can we pair up and have teachers collaborate so that they can learn the strategies that are helping their kids succeed. We spent time grouping kids by their competency determination, but then also focusing on growth and from one year to the next, not just simply like the level they fell into.
So I know everybody spoke to some of the things that we're implementing, but a lot of our PD time this year is going to be dedicated to developing more performance-based assessments that align with higher order thinking skills, because we are noticing that we need much stronger higher order thinking skills now with the new next generation test. We're also focusing a lot of departmental common planning time, that's special ed and regular ed teachers, to analyze student exemplars. So like Michelle said earlier, for the first time, we're getting ELA open responses back that we're actually seeing how they're scored and how the specific students do, and then we can focus on areas of weakness there, analyze the scoring. We have the core English and core math requirement for all students who score below a certain threshold, so that is a secondary math class and secondary English class on top of their normal class that focuses on standards that they may have gaps in. In those core math classes, there's the monthly benchmarks, which are determined by item analysis. So the math department breaks down the item analysis and then determines benchmarks. We're implementing edulastic this year, like Tracy talked about for the middle school. So computer-based testing, a lot of the kids we noticed struggled with computer-based testing versus paper tests. We developed common assessments in English, math, and science. We've worked a lot on our curriculum, but now it focuses on modifying assignments and assessments, so really making sure that all the students have equal access to the same standards, which I think shows growth, why we saw a lot of growth in those students with disabilities categories. So we hope to keep moving forward there. And we also added special ed support to the 8th grade science classes this year.
Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
Who wants to go first?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
So as a, as a parent who has an 8th grader, was the first group of 8th graders at the high school, I could definitely see the struggle. And then from going from 8th to 9th grade, it was like a switch flip for him. So I think that that transition year of upstart, like he was the first year of the 5th grade, that first year when the mine at NDECA split, he's been, that particular group of 8th graders has gone through every change in recent years through the Wareham Public Schools. So I think it is interesting to note that when you see those numbers and you say that it's during a transition year, having seen it myself with his report card, I understand that completely. And again, I'm going to ask you guys the same question about if you know your MCAS alt percent.
Well, in all fairness, I expected it, so I calculated it while we were sitting there. So in 8th grade, we had four students taking the alt, so it was 3%. And our 10th grade, we also had four students taking it, but we had a smaller number of students, so that was 5%.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, just to speak to your point about the transition, we've, we've heard a lot of really positive things from the 9th grade teachers in terms of the level of preparedness and just, the kids are just, they understand the routines of the building and what's sort of expected of them in the high school, and it's been nice to hear that as well from, so it's nice to get your perspective on that.
Ms. Bakayaki?
So I guess I would just say, I'll leave the questions about the actual scores to Mike, but it's obvious that you have yourselves already analyzed them over and over and have already, you know, taken steps. That's obvious. And the piece about the writing, we've heard, what we've heard tonight is that that's a priority at all grade levels. So I'm sure that we'll see that that will build from year to year. So that's it, thank you.
Anything to spare? Okay. Okay, so for my part, so, I remember when, you know, all the other grades did the legacy, you know, and the head of education at that, I remember, everything used to be like level one, level two, level three, and they got rid of all that. And in the first year they did the legacy, there was a memo that the head of education put out and literally, literally they called it an accountability pause. Like there would be like, it's a big asterisk year, you know what I mean? So, so this is, I can't really, there's not, there's no trend for me to comment on.
Right.
I mean, I'm as, I'm as, you know, I don't want to say upset, but I'm a little, you know, as disappointed as you guys are, you know? But you guys have been doing this forever, you, I know you guys know how to have a quality school, put out, you know, level one work, and I know that, even though this doesn't show it. So, so, it's unfortunate but necessary, but yeah, there's, there's no accountability. There's nothing else to measure against. But I mean, I, I take what you're saying, you know, and there'll be higher expectations obviously next year, you know? I did have, I wish I asked this of everybody, but I'm curious, did, were there any perfect scores at all? I mean, so I'm seeing some nodding heads back there, but, but I wish, I wish, it's gone long enough, I don't want, I wish I'd asked that, but that's great to see some nodding heads that there have been some perfect scores.
We had, let me see. We had, we had a couple that missed it by about a point or so. I don't know that we had any that were, that were right on with the new, well, we have one, we have one.
Okay, cool.
We have one.
And the point being, you know, these are kids that are, you know, taking the same classes and some learn better than others, and you know, and you can come out taking, you know, doing a perfect score, you know? And another challenge, I think that you guys had this year too, so you had the 8th grade obviously, but I had asked for the student retention numbers and you had a lot. It was, it's, it's usually pretty high for you guys, but it was exceptionally high of kids that were in, that you held back in grades nine and eight. So that was in the 50s, you know, combined. It was 40 something in 9th grade and 10, I think, in the, in the 8th grade.
The 8th grade.
You know, and so you've got 50 some odd kids showing up that aren't really prepared, you know, and that's, that's not on you. They, it's, and I won't belathe her that, I mean, everyone knows how I feel about that. But that's another, that's a factor, you know? So, no, like I said, it's, I'm going to keep, it's going to be tough for next year, yeah.
We won't be having the same conversation next year. I just know. It'll probably be too much so, and then you're going to have to justify the next year why you didn't do as well last year, so.
No, I kinda am expecting that too, so.
Yeah.
Mike, I'm sorry, can I add something? I just wanted to say, thank you for supplying the information about the differences between the tests because it was really helpful. It's hard enough to take in all the information, so that was really helpful, so thank you.
Thanks.
And with that, anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See y'all tomorrow.
Yeah, right. So, so, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and just do what we need to do tonight, you know? Yeah. So with that, I talked, I talked with the superintendent and about perhaps, you know, shifting her evaluation into November, and she was totally fine with that. Oh, okay, hold on. Okay, sorry. All right, so I did speak with the superintendent and she's okay with us, you know, shifting her goals, not her goals, her evaluation into the November meeting. I'll work with her on that, so.
Well, can I just ask, when you say her evaluation?
Yeah.
Not just like the introduction of her evaluation?
No, no, so she's going to have to, if I had finished tonight, then, you know, if you had finished this full, this full agenda tonight, we would have probably had her self-evaluation at the next October meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then in the November meeting, because contractually we're supposed to do this by the end of October, by October 31st. So I asked her if she was okay, if she agreed that it was okay to go beyond that, and she was, she's always been very flexible when it comes to that stuff, and so she was. I'm grateful for that, because I didn't, I don't want to rush it, you know? Even if we did do all of this. So it might push out even more, but we'll get there. So, so there's, so, and frankly, I mean, I would love to do the superintendent goals, but that can wait till next, till next meeting, I believe. And I had spoken with her and she was okay with us voting on it with her not being here. And I said I would, I would do that, but not, but not if, you know, we had decided to make any changes, you know, if she was, if she was, if she wasn't here, we would, I would table that, you know? But she was okay with us voting on it if we had the time. So for next, so I guess we'll migrate to the, to the next meeting. I want to move the acceptance of gifts, the vote on superintendent goals, discussion of evaluation of superintendent, and just those. And then we can finish up these other items tonight. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
I'd like to have a motion actually, to do what I just said. All right, second?
Second.
So for Michelle, for, the motion was to, to move to the next, next regular meeting, the acceptance of gifts, the vote on the superintendent goals, and discussion on evaluation of superintendent. All right. So with that, I think we're on to report of the superintendent, and we have some bills that we have to pay. Oh, thank, oh, thank you, sorry. So we had the motion, the second, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, passes for a 00. Thank you. So now we're on to the report of the superintendent, approval of bills and payroll warrants.
Yes, so I'm moved to approve bill warrant 82919 for $1,410. Do I do them all separately?
I think so. I think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'll read them all.
Do I do them all?
Yeah.
Or you can say listed plus the two that we just got after, whichever way you want to do.
Okay, so the bills listed, payroll week ending September 21st, 2019, $139,839.60. Bill warrant 82919, $1,410. Bill warrant 91919, $1,026.13. Bill warrant 10319, $849,471.86. Two that were not listed but need to be voted, payroll week ending September 28th, 2019, And bill warrant 101019 for $125,218.79. So moved.
Is there a motion, a second? And who made the second?
I guess I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 400. So, so I think I'd like to move this one to the. Yeah, so that, I mean, if everyone's okay.
To the next meeting as well.
Can we just have a vote to move that one?
Uh huh.
Next meeting as well. Michelle, that's the discussion on votes for mask resolutions.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 400. I do have, I saved this for other business. There was an oversight on one thing on the minutes we approved, and I'd like to have a motion to reconsider, just one correction I'd like to have made on the minutes.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to reconsider?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Correct, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes 400. The change I want to have made is on page two, and this is, this is probably the most important one, probably, it says here, so, I don't know, like, under the discussion of the name of the school, second paragraph, first sentence, "It has been suggested to name grades, to name grades three and four of the mine at Forest, the grades three and four area, Mine at Forest, and the innovation hub, John Dicas." I want that to say John W. Dicas. Because that's what we said, that's what was presented. And if, if you have a motion to accept that change?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 400. And with that, I guess I'll take a motion to, any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 400. We're adjourned, thank you.